All right, Christine Hall, I just want to establish that we've got you. If we could hear your lovely voice, that way we know we've got you. All right, hello.
I'm here.
All right. Okay, on that note, it is ten oh four A M. On this Tuesday, February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five, and I would like to call to order this work session of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, can you please do roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Trustee Hall?
President.
Vice President Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Nicolet?
Good morning.
Trustee Phoenix? President Smith? Trustee Westlake? Trustee Woodley here, and student Annie Batavia? Absent. All trustees accounted for, Madam President.
Thank you so much. All right, so I would like to invite the other half of our finance dynamic duo, who I also like to think of as the Hawkeye of finance. Jeff Bazo, will you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you so much, Mr. Bazo. Now we'll move on to item one point zero four, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu Mu, Northern Paiute, Ni Hui, Western Shoshone, and Nu Wu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. All right, that closes item one point zero four and closes section one in its entirety, and we'll move on now to our main section for today. Section two are items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. Starting first with item two point zero one, the presentation and discussion regarding the Washoe County School District's fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six budget process and status, and possible action to direct the superintendent to analyze and report back to the board new items related to the fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six budget. This is an item for possible action, and we have with us our Chief Financial Officer Mark Mathers and our Budget Director Jeff Bazo. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good morning. We have, as you know, a couple of agenda items in this budget work session, a lot of ground to cover, so I'll just dive right into it. At this presentation, we will update you on what we know about the governor's recommended budget, and specifically the budget for the State Education Fund and Pupils Centered Funding Plan. There's still a few unknowns a little bit, but much greater clarity now on the governor's amended budget and the changes that have been recently made for K through twelve funding. So I will go through that, provide a high-level overview for you, and then I'll turn it over to Jeff to cover the calculation of our preliminary budget estimate. So the first item will concern the state budget. The second item will concern our own district budget. As you know, we match projected revenues that are based on the state budget against known nondiscretionary cost increases on the expenditure side. And so Jeff's going to walk you through matching up projected revenues for our district against projected expenditures for fiscal year twenty six and provide those numbers to you. And then lastly, we'll sum it up with a discussion of next steps, and at that point, we would also entertain any additional feedback of the board. So in terms of the amended governor's budget, when we last met on February eleventh, what we had was the original budget submitted by the governor, but we knew, again, there were issues with that budget. There was more than the three hundred million dollar structural deficit that he was asked to correct. What we had were very high-level amendment documents that had been filed by the governor's office with the legislature, and then we had money from the governor's office to kind of work with and kind of parse through. That's what we had on February eleventh. As I noted, late Friday, February seventh afternoon, there were additional documents dropped that were much more detailed, but we hadn't had a chance to go through those. Now we have. So the difference between last meeting, last budget work session, and this one is we do have the additional detailed documents that detailed each school district's allocations and per pupil numbers. The one thing we still don't have was when we met on the eleventh, there was going to be a hearing at which time the Department of Education would present the budget to the legislature. And so there are a few questions we have about what we saw. That hearing was rescheduled due to a snow day, if you will. That hearing will be tomorrow. So that will hopefully provide a little bit more context to the numbers that we're going to share with you, but we do have the numbers. And so to go through that real quickly, again, we had detailed documents that were dropped Friday afternoon, February seventh. And that shows real quickly that, as we talked about, state education fund sources and revenues remain flat. And we talked last time, the primary reason for that is weaker sales tax at the state level, and that includes Washo and Clark, and sales tax is forty percent of state education fund sources. So we start with kind of a very flat scenario for revenues in the state education fund, and we continue to see that, a three percent increase in revenues in fiscal year twenty six and less than a one percent increase in fiscal year twenty seven. That results then in very flat allocations on a statewide basis for adjusted base per pupil funding. You can see there that actual adjusted base per pupil funding on a budget basis decreases by one percent and then pops back up close to one percent in fiscal year twenty seven, the second year of the biennium. So you couldn't paint a more flatter picture than what we're seeing in that budget. There are, we saw initially decreases overall in weighted funding. That's now changed to a modest minimal increase of less than one percent. And we continue to see state general fund support decrease in both years of the biennium, and we can talk about that in greater depth. So last time, you know, we noted there's a couple of different ways to look at the state budget. And, you know, you will hear different statements made, some that include S B two thirty one funding, some that don't. We've tried to strip out the two parts of the pupils-centered funding budget here, the two main parts. And one is S B two thirty one funding. That's the funding for additional compensation increases for district employees. That's at the bottom of this table. And as we talked about last time, really all the state's doing is shifting funding from being directly funded by the state general fund to now the state general fund transferring monies into the state education fund. What some people could tell you, and it wouldn't be wrong so much, is, okay, state education funding has increased for S B two thirty one. Yes, it did, but state general fund funding for S B two thirty one decreased. So again, it's more of a cost shift here than anything. You will notice a slight increase in funding. That's not for public school districts. The increase relates to funding to charter schools based on the governor's proposal to expand S B two thirty one compensation to charter school employees. So that's why it goes from a hundred twenty five million a year to a hundred forty three million a year. So then if we look at the top line, you can see budgeted dollars there for K through twelve funding other than S B two thirty one. And as we talked about last time, if you compare numbers from one biennium to the next, you can make the point that funding increases six percent. But if you compare fiscal year twenty five to twenty six, you can see net funding decreases, and you can see it decreases again in fiscal year twenty seven. You can even see that comparing the bottom line number, if you include the state general fund and their support of S B two thirty one, even then, there's a decrease. So overall, there's a decrease in K through twelve funding displayed in the governor's budget. Part of that's related to what we believe are projected declining enrollment numbers. And so the state is somewhat taking advantage of that to decrease funding to K through twelve. Hopefully, those numbers make sense to you the way I presented them. The next slide here covers the different uses of that funding. And so the top number there is adjusted base per pupil funding. That is the funding that goes for the general education of all students. That is eighty percent of the total proposed uses of this funding. You can see adjusted base per pupil funding, budget to budget, fiscal year twenty five to twenty six declines fifty million dollars or one point one percent, and then it bounces back up thirty three million dollars or point seven percent in year two. Then you can see the other components of Pupils Centered Funding Plan uses there. Local special education that is increasing, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Auxiliary funding and weighted funding. And as we've noted before, at-risk weighted funding significantly decreases in fiscal year twenty six by forty four million dollars. We don't know what is behind that proposed decrease, and that's what we hope to understand better based on tomorrow's hearing. Could be a couple of different reasons, but it's significant nevertheless in terms of the total funding that's dedicated to supports for those students. So those were statewide numbers for the Pupils Centered Funding Plan account and the state education fund. And so now we'll turn our attention to what's proposed in those amendments filed by the governor's office for Washoe County School District. So our adjusted base per pupil funding amount, remember, last meeting, I talked about a two-dollar increase to the per pupil amount on a statewide basis. Unfortunately, I have to report that we, based on the documents filed, see a zero-dollar increase to the per pupil amount we will receive in fiscal year twenty six. And again, this is the general fund revenues for general education of our students. We receive currently nine thousand seven hundred five dollars per student in fiscal year twenty five, the current fiscal year we're in, and that is the same amount we'll receive in fiscal year twenty six. And then in fiscal year twenty seven, the second year of the biennium, our per pupil amount goes up by seventy one dollars or less than one percent. So this makes it an incredible challenge to try to pay for all of the inflation we see on our, you know, the goods and services we bid and procure. It'll be an incredible challenge to cover the step increases that are due to our employees and any kind of cost of living adjustment we may want to offer our employees. All of those, as Jeff will go into, are obviously increases to expenditures, and with flat base per pupil funding, right, that doesn't work. We just are not going to see an increase sufficient in that line item to cover our nondiscretionary costs. In addition to that, not-so-great news, there are a couple of other factors that impact estimated base funding in fiscal year twenty six. The first of those is a projected decline in our enrollment of a little bit more than a thousand students. This is projected by our school demographer. The business office works with the demographer to go through that. This, again, is based on the continuation of falling birth rates in our county. You know, the unaffordable housing we have, which pushes out larger families, and certainly some effects from charter schools. So we've estimated a drop of a thousand twenty five students, which equates to almost exactly ten million dollars of reduced revenues. So that's the fiscal impact of that trend.
Mr. Mathers, quick question. Part of that could be absorbed by needing fewer teachers. We've got retirements. Like, there can be, there can be some balance there, right, to offset some of that?
Absolutely. You're right to point that out, that we'll need fewer teachers with fewer students, and so that is a cost offset. Unfortunately, those cost offsets are not going to equate to that revenue loss of ten million dollars. So the budget department has done that analysis. You'll see that in the coming slides that kind of offset, but it's not enough to recover that total revenue loss. And then the second facet of the governor's budget that is problematic for our employees certainly, but for us as well, is S B two thirty one funding. So again, public school districts' allocations of that funding is flat. We get nineteen point three million of that funding per year, and that stays constant for the next two years. So back in fiscal year twenty four, last fiscal year, that dollar amount of nineteen point three million equated to just about a four percent COLA. But as we've used our own funding, our own general fund, to provide cost of living adjustments, the base salary of our employees has gone up to be competitive in this labor market, to provide a fair wage or a fairer wage. And so because S B two thirty one's not increasing by that same amount or percentage, it becomes less and less of an equivalent COLA, if you will. So what was that nineteen point three million equated to a four percent COLA in fiscal year twenty four, in fiscal year twenty six and twenty seven, unless it's increased in the state budget, it starts to drop as a percentage of your base salary to closer to three and a half percent. And so that is a problem that we see that will impact, you know, potentially our general fund budget.
Just a quick, simple question. Fiscal year twenty six, is that the same as school year twenty five, twenty six?
Yes, it is.
It is, I just wanted to say, next year.
Yeah, next year. So I hope that math makes sense, right? But it needs to increase consistent with the base wages that we have funded, and it's not. In terms of weighted funding, again, we've gotten now precise numbers based on the amended documents that were filed February seventh. Again, same theme here, a very flat funding, except for at-risk funding. You'll recall in fiscal year twenty five, we received roughly fifteen million of at-risk funding. Then, based on census counts statewide, our funding dropped to close to ten million this fiscal year. So we went from fifteen to ten. Now we bump back up by four million in fiscal year twenty six. Again, we've noted that kind of volatility in funding is really hard to budget on, plan for. It is good news. I don't want to say it's not good news, but we're still shy of where we were in fiscal year twenty four.
So I have a question, and thank you for pointing out, because I, one of the things I did when I was reviewing the presentation is I was looking at where we are now, and then all the fiscal years where we go down, and then we bump a portion of that back up, I see net losses in most of these categories, but also variability when our families are expecting a consistent educational experience. This is a lot like looking in the crystal ball, and I don't know what role our district plays with Pinion or others, but is the feeling from the Nevada Department of Education and the governor's office that this is a budget like they're really excited about? Because I'm wondering, like, where did they get the feedback from any of the seventeen, eighteen, if we consider charters, of course? Did any districts have a voice in this?
No, we do not. You know, per state law, as the state puts together its budget in the fall, state staff is prohibited from discussing proposed increases and other submissions to the state, to the state governor's office of finance. And so they can't talk about any proposals that they've submitted to the governor, and then, you know, it goes under a cone of silence, and there really is no feedback loop of school districts to react to this and explain the problems inherent in a proposed budget like this to the state prior to the filing of the recommended budget.
That is very helpful. Does N D E, are they a part of that closed loop?
Yes, they are.
So my question would be, and this is always, and I have no problem also with my own relationships reaching out. My hope would have been that our state-level education department would have respecting that there are rules and boundaries about who can be engaged in the development of this. Thank you. I did not know that, and that is valuable information. I do have a hope. I would have had a wish that things like this could have been brought up by some of the subject matter experts that are involved here, particularly with the variability.
Yeah, and I guess the one conduit of feedback we have is the Commission on School Funding. And we've kind of shouted from the loud and clear our concerns about the volatility of at-risk funding and the means to measure who are, what children are at risk and how that's budgeted at the state level. So we've been pretty vocal that there's a problem. We testified at the Board of Education. The Board of Education knows there's a problem. They're concerned as well. I know a number of legislators are concerned as well. So I guess that is the side door, if you will, and avenues we have to convey concerns. But that's kind of before we know what the state budget's going to look like. So just based on the last, or the current biennium, those were issues we saw and raised about at-risk funding. And now we again see, you know, we go up and down, and, you know, it worries me because I can't really say for sure what our fiscal year twenty seven funding will be. We're using the numbers in the proposed budget, but they will recalculate weighted funding allocations in fiscal year twenty seven, you know, midway through fiscal year twenty six. So we could drop back down again. I mean, that is absolutely possible. So it just, we've got to solve that one, because you're right, we need a consistency of services and supports for those students. And we can't do it when our funding goes down thirty three percent and then back up thirty percent from year to year.
Thank you. You recognized very early on in F Y twenty five that at-risk funding was going to be a challenge. It was a problem. And so now I see that it's going to increase in F Y twenty six. What has been discovered that helped to shift the loss to a gain?
Well, we don't know. I mean, again, what we're seeing is in total at-risk funding decreasing, and yet our allocation is increasing. And. Um, you know, certainly census numbers drive it, but again, we don't have a peek into other districts, specifically Clark in terms of their. Students grad scores, which is used to allocate the funding. And so again, we talk about one of the flaws here of these, of, of out risk funding. It, it is not a transparent calculation. And so it's hard to even project out. Past the current year as to what will happen. Um, and that, you know, we've proffered solutions to that. So I know that's not an answer, but it, it's just not transparent at all. Yeah. So last slide on the state, um, budget before I turn it over to Jeff. Um, we've talked about our per pupil amount staying flat in fiscal year twenty six. Um, this breaks down the allocations that were. Again, contained in the documents filed on February seventh, we've talked about the fact that these are for fiscal year twenty seven. Preliminary in the sense that they can and will change based on census counts of. English learners at risk and gifted and talented students. The, the lone bright spot here is local special education funding. This is a line item in the state budget that. Uh, accounts for the fact that in the current biennium, our special ed costs went up significantly. Both in terms due to, uh, compensation increases for special ed teachers like all teachers, uh, got. But also increased staffing to support I E Ps for our students. Um, so we saw our costs increase the current biennium. The state's basically catching up. And covering us for those cost increases we see in the current biennium. But it's not accounting for future increases. So it's constantly a game of catch up here. Um, until we kind of stabilize that cost. Um, but it is a, it is a bright spot that helps our budget certainly to see that number go up. Um, that's, a- as you can see, the rest of the numbers here, uh, aside from at risk are. You know, in the ones or below in terms of, you know, percentage increases. So again. The theme here is incredibly flat funding, both state statewide and for Washoe County School District.
Okay, moving on to the general fund estimate for next year, uh, the first, first, um. Again, just a reminder of how we build our budget. We start with a base budget, which is. Rolling up the current year's budget into next year and applying step increase and other known cost changes. And then lining up our revenues with the state budget that Mark just, uh, reviewed with you all. Uh, once we get there, then we have our preliminary estimate, which we'll see in a few slides. Uh, here's a summary of the general fund revenues. Again, uh, state funding is increasing. Uh, mostly due to that special or local special ed, um, funding increase that's catching up with our special ed costs. And then our local revenues are increasing by just over a million dollars. Most of that is due to. Um, ex, us experiencing greater than anticipated investment earnings. So in total, our general fund revenues are projected to increase by eighteen point eight million dollars.
That is a really important clarification because I misunderstood what local revenues were when I first saw this. So can you just? For a favor to me, explain what local revenues are because I. You, you helped me understand in my question, but for the sake of anybody following along.
Uh, yeah. So thank you for the question. Um, so local revenues are. Um, it's a mix of various different revenues that aren't state or federal funding, but they consist of. Investment earnings, um, field trip revenue from, uh, grants, indirect costs from grants. Um. We have some salary and benefit reimbursements. Those are mostly for, um. The, the roughly fifty percent of Department of Defense funding we get for our R O T C positions. Um, and then there's some other minor revenues in there.
Thank you so much for teaching us and me on that.
Yeah, it, and just to clarify, under the old Nevada plan, which some of you lived under. Local revenues included property taxes and a portion of sales taxes. And so there's this hybrid funding scheme under the old Nevada plan, under the new people centered funding plan. All operating property tax revenues and all sales tax are go to the state. I mean, they're literally trant wired by the county treasurer. To the state treasurer. And so those are all pooled now at the state level and come back to us as state revenue.
So moving on to our known general fund expenditure changes, uh, so again, when we. Roll the current budget forward and apply those step increases and any known cost of living adjustments that are already negotiated. Um, those costs end up at twelve point three million dollars for next year. We talked about the pers rate increase and the fixed costs related to Debbie Smith. Uh, or the opening of Debbie Smith for next year at our last work session. This next item is related to increased costs for special education positions. This is all driven based on the number of students with I E Ps. So I'll quickly jump to the next slide to go over this. Uh, but what you can see is on the chart to the right. A significant increase in the account of students with I E Ps in our school district. Uh, so when a student is identified with an I E P, um, that's. Uh. New teacher and assistant positions for the special ed program that they attend. Um, could be triggered based on caseloads. And then also if there's a one to one aid written to the I E P position is added. In total, over the last year, um, four point seven million dollars worth of these positions have been added. And that is to, um, fund the new positions related to this increase in the number of students with I E Ps. The next line item here is the resetting of school positions based on, uh, declining enrollment. President Smith, this is what you asked about earlier. Um, so declining enrollment was a revenue shortfall of nine point nine million dollars. When you run that revenue through our staffing guidelines, it results in two point five million dollars. Uh, worth of positions that are, um, enrollment based that decreased. Next, we have various known contract increases that could be for, um. I T contracts and other various contracts we have throughout the district. Uh, we have mid-year budget increases. So this includes the ed plan, I T project analyst that. The board approved in January and then also, um, the proposal for athletic directors, which will be on. Uh, the regular agenda today. We're also anticipating, uh, insurance rate increases for health insurance and property. Property and casualty and workers' compensation. Uh, board policy thirty fifty one requires our contingency account to be at one percent of expenditures. So that two hundred thousand dollar adjustment is to catch that up. And then also we've seen an increase in participation in concurrent enrollment, which was approved by the board as part of the strategic plan last year. Um, and also there's an increase to the, the fees that the colleges are charging. Um, so when you put all that together, it's a total cost increase of twenty eight point five million dollars. Another piece that's not on that summary, but we'll get, we'll report back to you on it if there's any, um, shortfalls. Are, you know, with flat funding or at risk funding increasing, but still being below, um, our F Y twenty four at risk funding levels. Um, there could be situations where, um, we have to shift costs, um. Around based on a school by school analysis of weighted funding. Um, so any shortfalls in weighted funding, then we'll come back to you and report on any impacts there. So our preliminary general fund estimate, if we take the known revenue changes and our known expenditure changes. We're looking at a preliminary general fund deficit of nine point seven million dollars. So our future budget presentations will bring ideas, um, forward. Uh, for solutions to address the preliminary budget deficit. Uh, and any desired cost increases. Will need to have equal offsetting decreases so that we can maintain that structurally balanced budget in the general fund.
So to jump in there, um, in two thousand twenty three, it also started bleaker. I mean, there is. More support of, um, funding additionally. I wouldn't say it was quite this bleak two years ago. But it was bleaker than where we ended up for. Can you just remind us like that we still have the economic forum? There is the work of the legislature. Um, it is not uncommon to start this process. With a starker view than where you end up, although that does not necessarily indicate we will end up in a fuzzier place later. But it could happen, right?
Yeah, that's, that's right. Um, this is unfortunately not atypical. Um. And, and you're right, um, in years past, we often saw an increase in state revenues projected by the economic forum in early May. And often K through twelve funding got a lion's share of that additional funding and that saved our bacon. If you will, in past years, I am a little less optimistic. This year about a sizable increase in projected revenues so far. For example, we haven't seen an increase in sales tax revenues. Um, and I think there's a number of economic headwinds one could point to. Either federal policy or, or otherwise that, that concern. Um, economists, but also state and local governments, right? Will they have to backfill? Any reductions in federal funding that is to come? So. I mean, candidly, I'm a little less optimistic, but, but I mean, to your point, we're what, maybe in the second inning of a nine inning game. And we have, you know, there are very strong propones for K through twelve funding in the legislature and they get their bite at the apple now. Um, and they will go through their process to review the proposed state budget and make changes. And so that absolutely will happen. Um. And we'll see where we end up. For you all at the board, this makes it very challenging to kind of. See what we're going to be proposing and, and, and kind of hold off. On a lot of it because we really don't know where we're going to end up until late May. Um, but, but I mean, to President Smith's point, this is early and things will change.
Thank you. Truly early. I like to stay optimistic because that's what we do and, and we always figure it out because we must. I will point out to us that having been very involved with the legislative committee with NASB, that there are. Numerous bills on the table that are unfunded mandates. And so I think it behooves us to keep an eye on those because. Like you say, we're in the second inning of a, a nine inning game and, and we don't know. What that end score, so we need to keep our eyes open on that.
And, and I, I would invite you, um, and I hope that you will bring that up, I think in item, uh, three oh four, three oh five later. Thank you. Cause that's a great point.
Uh, this next slide is just a more detailed, uh, summary of our revenues and expenditures. Again. That middle column there shows the nine point seven million dollar preliminary general fund estimate. Uh, the last part of the section, uh, just again, our major concerns, um, on what we presented so far. Our flat per pupil amounts, um, in, in the people centered funding plan. Um, the fact that the S B two thirty one allocation hasn't increased, um, to keep pace with base salary adjustments. Flat special education and E L weighted funding revenues. And then lastly, um, just the, the inconsistency or volatility of at risk funding. Um, you know, we have our number for F Y twenty six, but what does F Y twenty seven look like? And with that, I'll hand it back to Mark to go over next steps.
This will be real quick. Um. You know, again, we continue to work on the requests that the board presented at, uh, on February eleventh. As well as a number of other ideas and concepts and initiatives that the superintendent and the executive team have kind of. Brought to the surface. So we're doing that analysis. We'll come back to you. Um, the bulk of it probably will be after March, unfortunately, just again, based on the complexity of the issues and the late breaking information we're getting from the state. We're basically a month behind in the process from where we normally would like to be. I still think we're ahead of. Most, if not all, school districts and kind of doing this analysis, but again, just if you can be patient, um. The, uh, second bullet point kind of lays out all the things that we're doing. Um. Uh, I guess I would just say that, um, the nine point seven million dollar figure is a sobering number for sure. Um, we want to look at, um, investments. In, in, in certain areas, some of those highlighted by our board on the eleventh, we, we want to do that. We. Um, don't want to make this a kind of a one sided kind of discussion. But when we look at those additional investments that we would strive to make, that will mean. Until we get relief from the state to help with that nine point seven million dollar figure, we're going to have to be able to reallocate dollars. Away from other lower priority areas in order to fund those investments. Um, but we will be coming to you with. Again, kind of concepts and ideas based on the organizational reviews we've done, reallocations of. Uh, program budgets, uh, contract costs and, and a number of other items. And then we'll come to you with kind of a slew of what I call financial reengineering options. Where there are some opportunities as we get to the bottom of the toolbox from years past. What could we do in terms of cost shifts? Then it can help also offset that nine point seven million dollar deficit. So I think it'll be a combination of those. This is challenging work. Um, we all will need to be disciplined in kind of thinking about. Investments, higher or new investments, because as Jeff said, anything we identify that costs money will mean. Right? That only increases the deficit and we'll need to identify further reallocation. So it's. I know this is sobering. It, this is unfortunately the situation we find ourselves in at this point in time. We will be working hard in terms of educating the legislature. I know a number of us will be doing that. And explaining the real world consequences of the, of the state budget on school districts and students. So. All of that we're going to do over the next several months, but we will continue to. Work on these ideas and come back to you periodically. And we're kind of still kind of figuring out what makes this the most sense in terms of the cadence of that. Uh, of those, uh, that feedback for you. Um, but we will, we will always come to you with ideas. Um, and as, as Dr. Nicolet said, we will, we will get to a balanced budget, uh, position. We will identify the ways to do that. Um, so with that, I will open it up to all of you for any additional feedback. Again, as we march through this budget timeline and process.
Thank you, Mark. J G, do we have any public comment on this item?
Pablo Navadurin.
Welcome, Mr. Navadurin.
Hello. It's start kickoff, uh, say lecture page. So. So as I say, let's try, we'll. We're getting more money for the, for students who need extra help. So. I want to give, give you a mind to that. That, uh, all high school, not all high school have a lecture course, for example. Um, theater don't have no theater, corner arts. Or any certain let them have booster and the money to have one. So in a signature program, you have to balance out all kinds of stuff. You know, for example. You know, Galina will get increased allocation, but I will talk about next year now. So. So that one will prove. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navadurin. Thank you very much. All right. So bringing it back here, um, I appreciate the timeline because I, I'm, I'm glad that we're going to stay aware. But obviously, I mean, of course, besides encouraging the team to be looking for ways to be resourceful. We wouldn't make decisions until we know, because I, I wouldn't want to put anybody through a panic when. There is a grand slam in the bottom of the ninth or something such as that, but I like. Keeping us aware and showing us things, but holding back on decisions or direction until we know more. And we just frankly do not know enough as it is. Um. Um. Trusty fans, go for it.
No, I'm just going to add on to all that. Thank you for that update. Um, you know, uh, giving us that, uh, idea of where you're going and how it's, uh, the, the, the roadblocks that are in the road and. Also taking that proactive approach, you know, at the different levels that you had mentioned that Beth had brought up, that you're trying to get to those. Meetings and hearing your voice and that kind of stuff like that, all that work that goes into that. So that, uh, it could be heard. But the last thing about the investment ideas, you know, looking forward on what we can and cannot do. and cannot do, you know, I say take a pretty good aggressive approach at that and find out how we can go about doing it, just me speaking to you individually as a trustee. Okay, thanks.
And so on that note, we do have, I, I am going to share with my colleagues a motion that I'm going to be making on behalf and in discussion with our, our other employees. So we, we of course work very closely with our one employee, Superintendent Joe Ernst, but this board does have a second employee and that is our chief internal auditor, Kirk Starkey. And so I stay very close with Kirk per, per board policy and his team was previously staffed at a level several years ago and that was cut back and they have absolutely made do with what they have. However, in, in recent years, and this is not just a one-year trend, this is a multi-year trend, the number of audits they're doing, investigations that they perform, internal audit has an incredibly important job with maintaining our fidelity to taxpayers to look at fraud, abuse, waste, general audits and training. And so with his permission and on behalf of him and his request, I will be making a motion to request a financial analysis of their needs and what costs would be associated to that. So to kind of cut to the chase, Chief Internal Auditor Starkey is asking potentially for another position, but he would like to do a fiscal analysis of his team in partnership with senior staff and have that be something that is considered as we make all decisions. So again, these are just financial analyses. It does not necessarily mean that we would be voting for it or not for it, but I, I do feel it's important to carry forward that, that request, which has been, it's existed for a few years now, but Chief Internal Auditor Starkey is, is asking for our team's support in conducting this analysis with the approval of the board. So that's my setup and based on that, I move that the Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to conduct a fiscal analysis of the needs of the internal audit department in partnership with the Chief Internal Auditor and bring that analysis back to a future budget discussion.
A second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by President Smith. We have a second by Trustee Westlake. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, all those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. I appreciate that. And if Chief Internal Auditor Starkey is watching, I'm sure he is also very grateful as well, too. For anyone who's also watching along and noticed that I said six to zero, it is because one of our colleagues had to briefly step away and he will be back and he will rejoin this meeting shortly. So that's the only item that I had, such as that. I want to look and make sure that I see everybody else's lights. Trustee Hall, I want to make sure to invite you into this conversation if you have anything to add. Otherwise, we'll move forward with kind of wrapping this item up.
I am good. Thank you for asking.
Very good. All right, colleagues, so now I would be looking for a motion that you see here on the agenda to close the item and wrap it up in a bow to provide direction based on the previous motion to analyze and report back to the board items, if that is the pleasure of the board.
Thank you, President Smith. I move that the Board of Trustees provides direction to the superintendent to analyze and report back to the board new items related to the fiscal year 2025 through '26 budget. Diane Nicolet, second.
All right, seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much. That closes item 2.01 and brings us now to item 2.02, presentation and discussion on the Washoe County School District allocation process and possible action to direct the superintendent to analyze and report back to the board, still changes to the action process. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us our Deputy Superintendent Tiffany McMaster, again, our Budget Director Jeff Bazo, and our Lead Elementary Associate Chief, Dr. Mike Paul. And, and as we get this ready, I would like to start this item off with some praise because I think that motion in the last meeting, it was the longest one I've ever voted on for sure. And even before we do the first slide here, I want to say bravo to the team. You took a very detailed direction from this group and delivered on a presentation that hit all of those areas. And so thank you so much. It's very, very clear that a lot of work went into this in a short period of time to be ready for us to talk about this right now. So thank you.
Good morning, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the Board of Trustees. Tiffany McMaster, Deputy Superintendent for the record. We look forward to diving into this allocation process with you today. And I wanted to start by just reviewing the agenda for our presentation to you today. We will summarize the allocation process, which will include projected enrollment and preliminary allocations, as well as our process for spring and summer adjustments, beginning of the school year and count day adjustments, and mid-year allocations. We will also dive into areas of inquiry expressed by this board and talk about collaborative school allocations, the K three class size ratios, and we will close out with special education student counts and allocation calculations. So starting with the summary of the allocation process, we want to begin with just a few, few definitions to orient us. First of all, the term allocation applies to a school-based position. When we refer to enrollment, there are three different types of enrollment that you'll hear discussed throughout the presentation today. We have projected and preliminary enrollment. So projected enrollment is what we use to base our allocations on prior to the school year beginning. Infinite campus enrollment refers to the number of students that are enrolled in our student data management system at any given time. And then actual enrollment refers to actual student counts on the first day of school through count day. We begin by framing the principles and considerations for allocations displayed on this graphic. Allocation decisions are very complex and there are many factors that we must consider when talking about allocations. As we progress through this presentation, we will explain these multiple factors displayed on this screen in more detail and show how vision is often pushed and pulled with these factors and sometimes they can compete against each other. Allocation decisions are based on these factors and considerations include things like supporting students while we're also facing staffing challenges, the timing or the impact of our decisions and maybe some unique circumstances specific to various schools. But ultimately, cost in alignment with our budget is a key factor of consideration as well. These factors result in that push and pull between the art and the science of enrollment projections as well as allocation decisions.
This next slide is a summary of our allocation process. So before the next school year, we really start this process in October, so almost a year before school starts. Our demographer projects enrollment and I'll talk about that more, I believe, on the next slide. But that's the enrollment we use to run through our staffing guidelines to provide schools with what their allocations will be for the upcoming school year. Then, the, in, in November, as we're finalizing all the reports that go out to schools, it's usually the Monday, or it's new this year, we moved it up. But the Monday after Thanksgiving is when we release the certified allocations to schools and then that kicks off the, I guess now, winter and spring hiring process. Then we start after spring break in April, looking at infinite campus enrollment and comparing that to projected enrollment and look for areas of high need that meet certain criteria to add allocations at that point in time, rather than waiting until the beginning of school to add the allocation. Then when we get to September, we have count day. That's usually the first Friday of September when enrollment stabilizes and that's when we make our staffing changes for the year. And then from after fall break through November, we're monitoring infinite campus enrollment again compared to count day enrollment to look for any necessary mid-year adjustments to allocations. So enrollment is key to this whole process, as you could probably tell, because most of the staffing at the schools are teachers and those positions are enrollment-based calculations. Also, when we just went over the previous presentation on the budget, most of our general fund revenues are from base per people funding. So almost 88% of our general fund revenues are based on what our enrollment is. And then these school-based positions are almost 81% of our general fund costs and those are direct positions to schools such as like teachers, principals. And so our school staffing guidelines are completely based on enrollment unless there are some positions that are fixed. So if enrollment's increasing, staff increases. If enrollment decreases, then staffing decreases as well. So again, the starting point is projected enrollment. I'm simplifying this process because it's a lot more complicated than this, but the projected enrollment starts off with rolling students up to the next grade level, then taking into account any known zoning changes. For kindergarten, our demographers using recent birth rates to project what kindergarten enrollment's going to look like. We've talked about the impact of new charter schools or private schools opening or expanding. So those are taken into account. And then anything else that occurs in the zone, like if there's a new apartment complex or housing development, that's taken into consideration as well in those base enrollment projections. So when we calculate teacher positions at schools, we use what's called net enrollment. So what we do is we take the projected enrollment for each school and grade and then we subtract out the number of gifted and talented school within a school or magnet students because they're in those GT programs or gifted and talented programs for all or most of the day and they receive their own teacher allocations for those positions. Then we subtract 75% of specialized self-contained students from the gross enrollment. And this is because self-contained students do spend most of their day in their self-contained special education classroom. This isn't the case with every student, but most students do spend most of their day in that self-contained classroom. We do have students that are in our special ed resource or speech and language programs. Those students do spend part of the day in special education programs, but do spend most of their day in general education classrooms. And just to clarify, we do not back those students out of their counts here because they do spend most of their day in the general education classrooms. So when we calculate the teacher allocations, we use that net enrollment rather than the gross enrollment number. So here's just a quick example of how that special education calculation works. So if we take an example for first grade at an elementary school and we say we have 62 students in those grade or in that grade and four of those students are in a self-contained strategies program, what we do is we multiply that four by the 75%, so that's the three strategy students. We back those three strategy students out of the total of the 62 students to get the 59 net students. And then we divide the 59 students by the max class size in that grade level of 20. That comes out to 2.95 teachers and it gets rounded up to the nearest whole teacher. So in this example, this grade would receive three teachers for the 59 students.
So on this, I really, I, I really love you breaking this down. So in general, with allocations and a little bit of a preview, we, no matter what, even in the best of situations, we're not going to take, we're not going to have the funding to make broad stroke changes to allocations, but I do see an opportunity to use a scalpel in a few places. And so something that I'd like to pose to this group and we'll see where the conversation goes and the type of analyses or direction that staff and the superintendent is looking for the board. But in this area, I see an opportunity for a scalpel. We have heard from teachers who have students that fall outside of the norm, meaning that they're students that fall into these like strategies computations, so not the speech, okay, not, not the special education students that automatically don't count in this, but the students who do count for the 75%. But in, in several situations, we are hearing from teachers who have these students in their general education classroom more than just a small portion of the time. So something that I'd like to suggest and just bring up to the team is that I think this is an area where maybe we could have two levels of approaches based on when a general education teacher really does have, let's say, a strategy student that is pushing, pushing in a majority of the time, because we are hearing from educators, not a lot, but some, and, but for the some it happens to, it matters to them, where based on their timelines, the students are in their classrooms more. And so I offer for consideration that this is an area where maybe we can create some delineation for when a special education student really is being pushed in, as well they should, because we want them in these general education environments. But I, I think that this is an area potentially for a scalpel to reconsider the weighting of students that really are in a general education setting more than they are in the self-contained setting. So I just wanted to pose that to the group and I think that's also in line with quite a few messages and advocacy that we've heard from educators that are in this, this situation. Trustee Westlake?
Thank you, President Smith. I have to agree wholeheartedly with what President Smith just said and I'm going to take it even further. If a child is in a general classroom, it, to me, it doesn't matter what the timeframe is, one minute, one hour, two hours, there is an impact to that classroom, a most definite impact to that classroom. And that child's needs need to be met in that classroom. That teacher needs to be prepared. The other students are impacted. The child that is pushing in is impacted and we need to meet those needs. And by shortchanging our teachers, and this, this to me is a way for us basically to get around what our responsibilities are. I'm sorry, I'm just going to say it. It, it, this, I hear so many times from teachers that are impacted by this, to me, it's smoke and mirrors. I'm sorry, you guys. Actually, I'm not sorry. We can do better. We, we have to do better. If a child is pushing in, that child needs to be counted in that classroom. He's in that classroom. It doesn't matter how long he is in that classroom. That child is in that classroom. He should be counted. Thank you.
Yeah, to kind of bring it back here, so we know that, or I know, we know, all of our staff, you're making decisions based on money, okay? No one is waking up in the morning and trying to make life difficult for anyone. So to kind of maybe just pull it back a little bit, all of these decisions and this approach is not based on someone's opinion or how we want to do it. It's driven by finance. And that's really why these decisions and these discussions need to take place at a board level, because at the end of the day, when we advocate for things or we suggest maybe a tiering approach, fundamentally, that financial responsibility comes back to this board, too. So I, I recognize that nobody is purposely trying to make anything difficult, but we do have a responsibility as a board to identify these opportunities, to consider them and then potentially make balancing budget decisions as a result of them. and then potentially make balancing budget decisions as a result of them. And so I fully understand that the system we have right now is based on the lack of funding we have, which is inadequate. But I also recognize this board's responsibility in providing that direction and then also having to balance that against other things as well too. So just wanted to kind of clarify that. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I also wanna add to the conversation that the team works really hard to make objective while having nuance to many decisions. And so certainly as a collective organization, trying to do what's best. We saw that eighty-one percent of our budget is going to allocations to school buildings. And certainly don't want any confusion around our commitment to doing what is best for schools, for classrooms, and for students. And so I would maybe just ask, as we are continuing forward, I, I wouldn't describe the process as smoke and mirrors. I would describe the process as a calculated process that is difficult and complex and in the best interest of our students, our staff, and our families.
Sorry, I got two microphones here. All right, good morning, everybody. Mike Paul for the record here. I'm elementary area superintendent. Thank you very much. So I am going to go through a little bit of how we work with the preliminary allocations once they've been determined by our demographer and business department. And moving forward, once we are at that end of November timeline that we saw and we're pushing them out to schools and working with them at the school level to determine how to move forward in that process. So that's where we're at now on the timeline at that end of November time. So as we've discussed and as Superintendent Ernst just mentioned again, you know, our enrollment is, you know, budget-driven, you know, obviously budget-driven. It's a huge part of our general fund budget, in the eighty percent there. A lot of money is put into our personnel, rightfully so, with our teachers and principals and what's happening on an everyday basis there in our schools. And so we have developed staffing ratios, staffing guidelines based on enrollment in schools that we follow. For elementary, middle, and high school, it's all a little bit different. And I believe in your presentation that you've all received with your materials, those staffing guidelines are appendices at the end of your materials that you've all received. So we can, you can refer to those as we, as we move through and definitely answer some questions on that if you have it as we move through. So when we're looking at this, when the staffing, when the preliminary allocations are released to our schools, one thing as area superintendents that is critical is we are immediately having one-on-one discussions with every single one of our principals at, from the onset to make sure that we are all on the same page with our allocations. There are a lot of factors to consider. While our business department and demographer are excellent in their work that they are doing to get as accurate of allocations out there as possible. With over a hundred schools, there are always little nuances here and there that we want to make sure are, are accurate and we know what's going on. We have grant-funded positions that are always in the mix. We have long-term leave sort of absences, different kinds of contracts. We always wanna make sure we have a lot of new principals every year. We always want to make sure that all of our staff knows what is going on, how everything works. So everybody knows the process that we have to go through because we roll right into internal reassignments within our schools. We work very closely with our HR department with, with these preliminary allocations because we want everything to go as smooth as possible because we have all of our teachers and their employment is affected for a lot of our teachers, especially when we're gaining or losing allocations at a school. We have to shuffle teachers around sometimes and we wanna make sure we're following the negotiated agreements and all of that when allocations are being moved. So it's a very delicate process that we have to make sure our, our teachers and our principals are educated in the process to make it go smooth. So we are always very cognizant of that. And ESPs are our classified positions. Those positions are released later in the spring. So this is all certified positions and allocations that we're talking about at this time. So very close contact with every single one of our schools on an individual basis to make sure this process goes well. And then elementary schools are, are a little bit more straightforward in this process because with licensure, it plays a big role. The vast majority of our elementary folks have a license that can span all grade levels. Some of our elementary folks have an early childhood license, which is pre-K through two. Most of them cover all grades, so it's a little bit easier to be moving people around. But when we get into secondary, master schedules play a huge role in how all of the puzzle pieces fit together. You know, most of our secondary folks are licensed in one, maybe two areas, on the content area. They're math-licensed or social studies-licensed. So when we give allocations in a big spot, in a big lump bucket, like you could say, to a secondary school, it is quite a complex puzzle that very talented counselors and administrators have to sift through to say, okay, here, large high school, you have a hundred teacher allocations. Now, they have to go through their master scheduling and say, okay, we get this many go to math, this many go to science, this many go to all of the electives that need to handle, and spread them all out in a big, complex puzzle because we have, there's a lot of considerations that have to be out there. We have to make sure that they are in the right types of electives and core content to make sure all of the credits for all of the kids are covered, to make sure graduation requirements are handled. And we have to keep in balance the needs of all of the students to make sure there are enough different kinds of electives to keep kids interested in coming to schools. And if there's CTE programs that need to be covered at certain schools and all of the content areas are covered. And yes, we do have those staffing guidelines and staffing ratios we need to cover. And that works, where it can get into some tricky balance. And when we look at average class size within our high school settings, that, that can be a little tricky as well. And I think the word average is what we really need to be taking a look at because there could be some class sizes based on, based on our, our, our need for certain electives that might be a little bit out of balance because of the need for some electives and the need for some content areas. That might be some classes a little bigger and some classes a little smaller than others because of the needs of the kids at the school. So that average across the board is something we really need to remember and keep in our mind. So not so easy at the secondary schools, especially the bigger you get. And even the smaller schools in middle school or the smaller high schools are kind of tricky also because they're not able to have maybe as many electives to keep kids interested in because they don't have enough staff or as much staff as our larger schools. So very complex in the secondary world.
Thanks. Sorry, I had a question on the staff licensure.
Yes.
How difficult is it for teachers to get certified? If, if there's an interest, I mean, what's the timeframe? How difficult is it for them to get certified and licensed in courses?
So I, I'm gonna phone a friend back here to our chief of HR.
There's no seats, so I'll come up here and talk. Doug Owen for the record, your chief HR officer. So some licenses, it depends which ones they want to get, but they have to take certain classes typically through a higher education institution. They can do that online if they like. Some of them, if they're just, it's like an adjacent license, it may only require them to go to school for a semester or for a couple of classes. Others, if you're trying to transition from, say, secondary down to elementary, there's a whole coursework to go through, right? Which could take you several years. That's, I'll just plug it really quick, but that's part of why AB49 is out there around licenses and trying to make that process and that transition easier. And I have a meeting on that in about an hour.
Well, good luck.
Thank you, Chief Owen. Took the words right out of my mouth. This is something that we identified early in the year, July, August, really trying to make sure that we get access to highly qualified personnel, recognizing the pipelines that we're working with. And so appreciate all the work. We'll continue to take that work down to Carson City and we'll continue to push on ways in which we can create greater flexibilities for teachers to teach multiple content areas. So thank you for the question.
So although there is a science behind projected enrollment, there's always slight adjustments that need to be made. And so we have a process during the spring and summer months to continue to look at the allocations that were issued and compare that with the Infinite Campus enrollment that's occurring. And the goal of this is, if at all possible, we like to minimize the disruption to schools at the start of the school year. If we can avoid moving teachers and if we can avoid having classes disrupted and, and students ending up with new teachers, we try to do that as much as possible. So that's the goal of this spring and summer adjustment process. So let me just further go into the why behind the spring and summer adjustments. Like I said, the goal was to minimize the student disruption after the year starts. We engage in consistent data review during this time. And that involves the communication between the principal and the area superintendents. Yes, we do have the data in Infinite Campus. However, there's other factors. You know, principals know, hey, I just had a couple of families that are going to be enrolling. We're just waiting on some paperwork. I mean, they, they know things that we can't necessarily see in the data so that regular communication is a key factor that is involved in this. We do regular data polls of enrollment and online registration and we use that for our decision-making. That decision-making is done at the team level. We have our area superintendents, our business, and our HR department meet on a bi-weekly basis to review all of that information and, you know, bring any anecdotal information back to the team for consideration. That area superintendent is in constant communication back to the principal during that time and we're constantly verifying the data and the enrollment. We really try to work towards consistency in our decision-making and not make a decision for one person that doesn't apply to another person. So I'm gonna just pause there.
Thank you. So the question I have is around this time of year, the spring, summer, in some of my school visits, I may have a principal tell me that he or she is projecting this level of enrollment. And yet the district is giving him, is projecting a different level of enrollment. I'm just curious, what's, what's the principal looking at contrast to the district? Why, where's their discrepancy?
So I'll, I'll point us to our third bullet there on the PowerPoint. And it really has to do with the Infinite Campus enrollment. So when you're getting that information, they're looking at Infinite Campus and saying, the numbers are telling us this, but we think it should be different. So like, for example, they may have a ninth grade class that is rolling up to tenth grade. And according to Infinite Campus, their numbers are dropping. And they're saying, this isn't right, our, our students are rolling up. Well, we like to spend a little bit of time and dig into that a little bit deeper. We have students that transfer to TMCC High School, for example. We have a new Debbie Smith opening up. We have students that are going to AACT. So why is that drop occurring? And is there an error? Is something going on? Do we need to make adjustments? So we constantly look at that Infinite Campus enrollment and we've set some parameters around that. And a big part of it is looking at our online registration. So we ask our families to register online to confirm that they're going to attend the next school year. We encourage our schools to get that online enrollment up as, as quickly as possible because that online registration is really the closest way that we have to verify if these trends with the projected enrollment and the actual enrollment that we think is going to happen on day one are disproportionate. So when our schools get their online registration up to, our, our goal is to get them up to ninety percent, we feel pretty confident that, that what they're seeing in Infinite Campus is going to probably hold true. And that's when we really start having some adjustments. Now, there's exceptions to that that have occurred. I know this year in particular with our high schools, with the opening of Debbie Smith, we've seen some, some things that were not quite as we anticipated what they would result in at the high school level. So we look to possibly make some adjustments. But again, we go back to that consistency. We work as a team to come up with some ground rules so that if we do something, we do it consistently for all schools and we don't have one-offs.
So is the district mostly looking at Infinite Campus? And the, correction, the district is mostly looking at enrollment, registration. The staff at the school building is, tends to look more at the Infinite Campus? Is that maybe the disconnect?
So I think that schools look at their Infinite Campus. Yes, that's, that's a main data point for them. But then they also have anecdotal information about students and families that we may not have access to. That, that plays into it as well. But that's the primary data point that they look at.
And then the district really focuses on that enrollment piece.
So I think as area superintendents, we have that exact conversation a lot with our principals. And, and the vast majority of the time, what it comes down to is a principal will look at their current enrollment and just have that rollover number and say, this is what we have now, that that's what we're gonna have next year. And it's a, and we see that a lot. And what, what would the, a lot of the conversation we have with our principals when we have that is, and it's just because of, you know, a lot of principals just don't see the big district-wide picture because they're supposed to focus on their schools and that's their job to do that. And then we start having that conversation about, well, this is what we look at from the demographer point of view. We look at the trends, like what, what Jeff was talking about earlier, the trends, the birth rates, the transencies, the neighborhood projections, and what happens as the whole big picture that we have to put into this over time. And that's why there's slide, a couple of slides ago, where I talked about that constant one-on-one communication over time with our principals to be able to have them understand. Sometimes that's a hard pill for some principals to swallow because they want to, they think that right now, this is what I need for my school right now. And we constantly have to coach them, well, you can't just look at one data point to make decisions on one data point. And so we're constantly having to coach them along. But, but going back to what I started with, they, they look at that one right now number in Infinite Campus of what they currently have and just project that as their rollover number for next year. And that's a lot of what they go off of a lot of times. So just have to educate them on, it's a much broader picture than just that one thing right now. And that's where a lot of that comes from.
Thank you. And I think there's another variable that I almost hesitate bringing up because it's very time-consuming, very tedious, and not everybody embraces this activity. But that is principals, administrative assistants, et cetera, calling families. Are you coming back next year? And so I have heard more than once frustration about, this is what I know is gonna happen in the fall and yet this is what the demographer is projecting. And, and how do those two come together?
So on the next slide, I'm gonna kind of dive into our process where we've really tried to work towards the consistency because the last thing we wanna do is give a school one or two allocations only then to take them away on count day. So we really looked at trend data over a long period of time to help with that. So ten seems to be the magic number. So in the first bullet, you'll see that when we're looking at enrollment that's in Infinite Campus, when schools get to ten students over what they were allocated at, that's a pretty good number to say, okay, they're gonna need consideration for an early allocation release. Under ten, it seems like those numbers fluctuate quite a bit. So that seems to be the, the number that tends to hold true come count day. And this is from analysis of year-over-year data to come up with that, that number. Again, we do look for that online enrollment to help us with, with making sure that it's actually ten. You know, if we had ten students over and only ten percent of the families had registered online, then we're not quite so sure that that ten would, would be the most valid data. So that would be a school that we'd say, hey, we really need to get some online enrollment going so we make sure that, that these numbers are going to hold true on count day. An example of the second bullet, when we have program or rezoning changes that could impact, if you remember correctly, a couple of years ago, we had a small pot of students from Hug High School that were rezoned to McQueen High School. We knew that that was coming up and we kind of anticipated. We knew that we were going through that rezoning change and that it would be effective for the following school year. So we actually worked with the schools and we had Hug High School set aside a few allocations and not post them and fill them because we thought, you know what? If this does happen, we're gonna need to add more allocations at McQueen. So we, we kept that information and were able to, as soon as that decision was made, I believe it was made in like March this time of year or so. we were able to take those allocations away from Hug because there weren't people sitting in those positions. Once positions are filled, you can't just take an allocation away. But we purposely left them unfilled so that we could give those positions to McQueen High School. So it worked out really well because we knew it was coming and we could anticipate it. So program changes and rezoning changes are sometimes used for those adjustments, and that's an example of one of those cases. Like I mentioned, although we don't reduce those allocations, we do try to figure out, like if you have a vacancy, how can we work that? So we keep principals in the loop when they're turning towards a loss of an allocation. It's not that we're going to take a teacher away from them this time of year, but we are telling them, you are on track to potentially lose an allocation come count day. That way, if they end up with a teacher vacancy, they can choose to not fill that so that we're not overdoing a person come count day, that we can kind of take care of that on our end. So again, remember, the whole point of the spring/summer allocation adjustments is to minimize the impact on students and staff. So we try to do that as much as possible, but I want to make it clear that we do not take allocations away when people are sitting in them during this time period.
So on this, my question for slide 18 is, the past couple summers, I have been contacted by families and staff members at various schools who have said, hey, we've got these numbers. We should be triggered. Can you please help get some attention to this? And in both of those cases, they did end up getting an allocation, but it came like two weeks before school. So with what I'm hearing, this is also why in future slides, I said, hey, when are those snapshots? When are those meetings? Because what I am hearing is that I've been, I've been bringing this to all the meetings. I've been warning for all the meetings, and we're not getting the allocation. And then in the two situations I'm remembering, they did end up getting that allocation, but they got it approximately two weeks before school. And that created family frustration because the best we could do is maybe a long-term sub. The administrator felt a little bit tied for who it is that they could hire on such short notice. So can you walk us through how often that happens? And if the team would be open to galvanizing decisions, maybe when site leaders could be hiring for these? Like, do you kind of see where I'm going with this? It's like, I'm hearing from the principals, we've been bringing this up, we've been bringing this up. They do eventually, they get the action, but now it's two weeks before school, and it's very difficult to fill that role. And inevitably, there's also frustration from families that now their child is starting the first day of school with a long-term sub. And hopefully, we do hire someone permanent in that role. But can you share a little bit more about that, if I'm making any sense at all on that?
Yes, you absolutely are. Again, we're trying to not have disruption. If they start the year with a long-term sub, that, you know, they may turn into a teacher hire. This is a disruption. So I absolutely understand where you're coming from. So let me just start my answer with this last bullet. Once the above criteria is met, you have 90% online enrollment, you're 10 students over at the grade level, we put that at a, we staff that at a meeting, and then we look at it the next meeting to make sure that that data holds true. And that's where a lot of this, this happens is we get the, they're going to trigger, then we look again, and their numbers have dropped, and then they go back up. So there are some schools that they're in that little fluctuating area. So that could be part of the rationale for that. I'm gonna go forward to this next slide to help explain a little bit, too. We also look to, you know, when schools advocate for allocations based on what they're seeing in Infinite Campus, we've done some trend data here, and I may need to phone a friend on this one, but I'll try my best. So in 2324, for example, we had 40 elementary schools that did not meet that criteria to trigger an allocation, but we're saying, we think we should get an allocation released early. The number of elementary schools that would have lost that allocation on count day was 14. So that means we would have given them an allocation only to take it away. And of course, any issuing of allocations comes at a cost. So we want to make sure that that cost is going to be covered by the increased enrollment of students that are actually going to be in seats. So we're looking at about a third of the time when we get people advocating, it doesn't actually hold true. So that's why we make sure that we have data to see if it holds true. Did I miss anything?
I just wanted to also add, we've looked over the years to, can we reduce the 90% below the 90% and the 10 students over the trigger point to something lower than that? When we get to anything lower than that, it becomes extremely inconsistent. So just some examples, we had a school that was at 98% of the enrollment confirmation percentage, five students over the trigger point in the spring. Those students didn't show up. They didn't trigger that allocation. We've also had schools, there was one that was, you know, 80% or I think it was 79% enrollment confirmation percentage and 16 students over the trigger point. We got to the start of school, students weren't there. So we would have had to reduce that teacher allocation, collapse the classroom, and overage the teacher. So, you know, with every part of this allocation process, we're getting feedback from schools trying to adjust and be more responsive and using historical data to make those decisions, but also trying to minimize disruption as best as we can.
So to add another voice in that, because I had a couple of other things on this slide, too. When principals have to stay over by the 10, and let's say they're nine, we're starting the school year heavy in these classes, expecting them to make it to count day, and then granting them another position because they never quite got to 10, right? So they're heavy that whole time. I very much hear you, but I am of the individual opinion that that is still something that needs a scalpel, okay? A scalpel. Because when they're nine over and we expect them to wait for the four weeks, I will tell you anecdotally, okay, and these are from families that I've talked to that have started the school year, and I don't know if they're in these classrooms or not because I have no idea what classrooms these are, what schools, what grades. But I can tell you anecdotally that I have spoken to families over the years who start in over-ratio classrooms, and then they leave our district. They are part of why that class doesn't trigger that. So it's not just that people aren't showing up, it's that families are saying, I'm not doing this. And then they leave, and they find another educational placement for their student. So this process absolutely makes sense, but there is a second side to it that some families are saying, I'm not, I'm not gonna wait. This classroom's over-ratio. I'm gonna go to a different school. I'm gonna find a different model. And so I offer that as like a second side to the experience of our families, just to think about. Because I very much hear the logic with the 10 over, but then we carry that into an over-ratio classroom at the start of the year, and then we grant them another one. And I am of the opinion that that needs a scalpel, like it needs, in my opinion. I think that that deserves another look at how we do that because some families are leaving because they're starting the school year in an overcrowded classroom, and they don't want to wait and see if there's gonna be another allocation on count day. So I just share that from my experience.
Thank you, President Smith. I'll be nicer. It's just, I'm so passionate, you guys. I appreciate the work. I do. And I know, I know there has to be formulas to figure all of this. But I think, and I had mentioned this in my one-on-one with Superintendent Ertz today. Some, numbers are great. I mean, numbers are great, but that's a starting point. Some of these classrooms, I think it's important also to look at the demographics and some of the behavioral issues that are occurring in that classroom because you can have a classroom of 25 perfect little angels, and you could add two or three more kids, no big deal. But then you can have another classroom that is at 20 kids, and there's three or four children that are struggling and that need extra attention. And you add one more kid, and the camel's back is broke. It's just, again, you can look at things very analytically. This is what we think is the perfect, the perfect number. But we've got to take some account of the human makeup, the demographics, the environment that is occurring in that classroom. Because, I mean, I hear, not every day, but at least two or three times a week, it's mentioned, you know, there's too many kids in the classroom, the teacher's struggling with the behavioral issues in the classroom. So I think probably it's gonna be, come down to money. But I hope that as a board, we're really looking at these just fine, fine-tuning things that can really advance us as a district and help us get ahead and really have some impact and really see some positive things. Or just sticking strictly to, this is the numbers, this is what we're doing. Because that's not how life works. It just, it really doesn't. You gotta pay attention to all the other little things going around you. Might have a plan, but you know that saying, best make plans by mice and men, and things go awry. So, thank you. I hope that was nicer. Thanks, you guys.
No, I appreciate the feedback. And before I pass it off to Mr. Bozo, I just want to highlight, I know you said, things come at a cost. So that's really the point of this slide, is things do come at a cost. And if we wanted to look at that data and release those allocations and then try to keep them whole on count day and not disrupt all those classrooms, they do come at a cost. So just for the past couple of years, it'd be a $1.1 to $1.4 million cost for those decisions.
Just one clarifying question. So again, and you said it, Ms. McMaster. Is that we don't take away an allocation? So if you have three first-grade teachers in a classroom, and you know, there's some enrollment decline, you're not gonna eliminate an allocation mid-year?
We do on count day. That's what count day is about.
You do on count day.
But we don't do it during the summer because we don't know if that'll hold true. We don't actually end up in seats on the first day of school.
Okay, all right. I understand correctly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, like, this is just, so, and I learned about the 10 over because I mistakenly thought it was 10% over. But then I learned it was 10 students over. But depending on the class size or the grade, 10 students over could almost be near to a third whole class. So again, I offer for consideration with a scalpel that the 10 students, that that number be considered, particularly based on the staff ratios. Because 10 students is a remarkably high level to hit when, you know, for those lower grades. So I just offer that for consideration, and also the knowledge of some families leave us. And that's why the numbers are going down between the start of school and count day because they don't want to stay in an over-ratio classroom. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, another aspect that's really interesting that our area superintendents work with our principals on is we might have a grade level that might be above where they are. And as a former principal, like to focus on that grade level and advocating for that additional resource. And sometimes when we look at net enrollment, which has been described, we might find that they have two other grade levels that are below what that number should be. And so we're trying to balance it out. I think what our presenters have shared with us is to try to eliminate the amount of disruption that's possible. So in this case, or the example I've just provided, they might trigger in this grade, but they might be losing two allocations. And so then they work with the principal on the consideration of moving a teacher up to that grade level and then only maybe losing one of those allocations. So I will say, from experience in different levels, that a good deal of thought goes into the nuance of the allocations at the site level. And when you look at high schools, and I think, you know, they may share this as well going forward, but oftentimes with instructional schedules built, even when they have less enrollment, they don't necessarily take those allocations away in most situations. So I just point that out because there is a good deal of nuance and exchange and collaboration that occurs with an area superintendent, a principal, to look at the whole of the staffing at the site level.
Yeah, and on that point, I think I was in a classroom, I don't recall what school, since I represent the fantastic district that has over 58 schools. But they, to work through the allocation process, I actually had a classroom where it was dual classes. And I think there were something like second graders and third graders in a single class. Does that ring, does that make sense?
It can. In some of our most unique situations, you can have that, particularly when we look at fixed allocations or schools with really small enrollments, that also can be the case.
Yeah, so I only say that because I know, in most cases, the staff really tries to minimize that disruption and does some innovative things like that. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to when school starts as we lead up to count day. So during the fourth, excuse me, the first four weeks of school, our allocation group is meeting and using actual student counts. So on the Friday of each week, our student records department is providing an official count of students. That, those actual counts of students are what lead up to the fourth and final.
I am so sorry. Trustee Hall has a question. That is on me. She had reached out, and then I just was very engrossed in the conversation. So Trustee Hall, please forgive me.
It's okay. That's all right. Superintendent Ertz kind of alluded to it. I just, I wanted to clarify that, I know you guys are gonna get into the secondary side of this, but most of the conversation so far has felt very much on the elementary side. So when a new allocation is triggered at a high school or a middle school, it is not necessarily going to alleviate those class sizes. And so I just wanted to share that, my feelings, or I mean, my experience with that, that this looks really different at secondary school, which is half of our schools. So, sorry, I'm having some weird feedback, so hopefully you guys can hear me okay.
Yeah, we can hear you. Great. Thank you.
I think I'm cutting out. Let me turn off my video. That might help. So I just wanted to make sure that we were gonna be addressing the secondary side of allocations. And I think it's in the next couple of slides, but I just wanted to make sure. That was my question.
So, sorry, but I'm confused. It's something that trustee Hall just said. So if at the middle school level, let's say, or a high school, a class size triggers an allocation, and they get an allocation, it's not gonna help that class size? Is that, I'm sorry, Christine, is that what you said, honey?
We can let Deputy Superintendent McMaster explain. It might be easier since I'm getting cut out a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, it's a complex process when you think about secondary. So let's say our ninth grade core classes are large at a school. So their biology, their algebra, their English classes are all fairly large size. And it justifies a triggering of an allocation. Well, when I go to hire, I'm not going to find an individual that has a algebra, biology, and I forget the other content I said, English. Thank you. I'm not gonna find anyone with that credential. So I have to post a job that I can actually hire. And let's say I'm able to find somebody that is a fantastic English teacher. So I'm gonna hire that person. It reduces my class sizes in English. But it doesn't reduce the class sizes in algebra, and it doesn't reduce the class sizes in the other areas. So it goes, like, it's just very, very complex at the secondary level. Um, and so much of it is driven on, sometimes you luck out and you're able to get this unicorn that comes in and can teach a couple of PE classes, a couple of English classes and a social studies class. And then you're able to reduce class sizes in a, in a beautiful way. But it's very, very complex. And especially when you're talking about hiring at count day. Um, somebody with unique, um, credentials like that has usually already been scooped up and they're, they're already in some other type of role. Um, so again, like depending on how it works, depending on the licensure of other people in your building, you can make some adjustments. But it is very, very complex. And when all is said and done, if you do find a way to, to spread that out, your, your reduction in class sizes when you have a very, very large school is gonna be one or two students. So it may not really be felt throughout the system.
Okay, jumping back into, uh, once school starts, we're using those actual physical counts of students to determine allocations. Once we have that first count, this is when, uh, area superintendents can, I mean, they continue to work with the principals like they did in the spring and summer. But we actually have numbers of students who are here, um, attending school to be able to start projecting like, okay, we're gonna need to add a classroom here or you're gonna lose this allocation due to lower enrollment. So go ahead and collapse that classroom, um, now to prepare for that. Uh, we also do hand out long-term subs, starting in the first week of school, uh, to set up any new classrooms where we see increased enrollment. Um, and again, as Deputy Superintendent McMaster alluded to earlier, just constant commu- communication between the area superintendents and principals to adjust for, for these things. One question that come up in the past is why do we use the fourth week for enrollment? Um, well, that's when enrollment begins to stabilize at a district-wide enrollment level. Um, so the, the first week of school doesn't include the kindergarten counts. Then we get kindergarten counts in the second week of school. And you still have students that are trickling in the third and fourth weeks. When you have students from out of state who are used to, um, starting school after Labor Day, um, they usually show up that week after Labor Day. Um, so again, that fourth week is when enrollment starts to stabilize. And we out, that count day, um, on that fourth week, we use to distribute allocations and finalize those. Because enrollment stabilized, if we tried to finalize allocations in week two or week three, what we would see is, okay, you finalize them in week two and you're triggering new allocations in week three and week four. Um, so that's, that's the purpose behind it. But again, by handing out long-term subs or collapsing classrooms where we think, um, or where enrollment hasn't come in, then we're trying to get ahead of those disruptions as much as possible. Uh, then again, last year during the last, uh, the budget process, uh, the board approved keeping one and two star school general, uh, general ed teacher allocations whole at count day. So if they were projected at a certain level of enrollment, but enrollment didn't come in at that level and they were set to lose an allocation, we would keep those allocations whole. Uh, this was a new process, which we funded out of our general fund contingency account. And the total cost this year was three point three million dollars to keep those allocations whole. One thing I'd like to note is when count day happens is around the time that the new star rankings are released. Um, so this year, what we did is, as an example, we had a high school that was a star high school, um, in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, that was going to drop down to a two-star school level. So we treated them like a one or, or two-star school and kept their allocations whole. That high school was set to lose a counselor and three teacher allocations, which would have been very disruptive. So, uh, we were able to keep, keep that school whole. On the other side of that, we also had one and two-star schools that moved up to the three to five-star, um, grouping. We did not treat them like three to five-star schools. We continued to treat them as one and two-star schools to keep the consistency at that schools, minimize disruption for the school year. Um, so just wanted to point that out, that whichever side of the equation benefited the schools the most, we kept, um, this year at count day.
Thank you. Um, is there any other criteria for one and two-star schools? Because I have two of my schools that moved from one, one star, one moved from one star to three, and I think the other moved from two to three. And they both lost their allocations in fourth and fifth grade. So is there another criteria, like maybe collaborative schools or something? Because I, I know two schools of mine lost allocations.
So, uh, the, the one and two-star schools did not lose any allocations on count day. But when we get allocations ready for next year, if a two-star school moved to a three-star school, let's say, we treated them as a two-star school for the remainder of this school year. But next year, when they get their projected enrollment allocations, they have been moved up to that three-star category.
Okay. This was this year though. If this isn't looking ahead, they lost it. So I'm, I'm just confused. That's why I'm asking if there's other things that go into this. Because I thought it was one and two-star schools got to keep fourth and fifth grade allocation for a year. If they moved up.
They did.
And so Trustee Westlake, you know, I'll look into those two schools just to make sure that we've got clarification. But, uh, very happy to hear that in either scenario, we really look to benefit the school with the additional allocation. Balancing the lag in data with the understanding that keeping that allocation for a year allows schools to continue to build stability as they're moving forward. So we'll look into the two situations that we had talked about and, and take it from there.
And I, I, I appreciate what you just said about for the school to give them time to build the supports internally, knowing that they've got this support for another year and we don't pull it right away. Giving them time to build the supports internally and figure out how best to support their, their school, their community, their, um, to, it just gives, gives them a little time to get their feet, you know, rooted on the ground and have a good foundation. So I think that's, yeah, I think that's important. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just visited a school who is in that situation and is keenly aware and starting to build up their capacity because, and that's, that's Diedrickson. And so when I was visiting the school, they were talking about the fact that this is their bridge year with the support. And then they're working on a plan because they know that they've now moved up. And so, and I, I know that that's happening. Um, so a question for count day. Is it like one student under? So let's say you've got three classes where you have a ratio of, we'll say, one to seventeen and you've got seventeen, seventeen, and then sixteen. Will one student under cause that classroom to collapse and then to fold into the other two classes? So what I don't know is on the count day, and I mean for all, not for the one and two scar- stars. So I apologize that I'm bringing this up at that slide. But does the one student cause the collapse of all of those kids to the other two existing classrooms? Like where is that water line?
Uh, so I guess to, I'm gonna use a slightly different example. Um, so let's say a school, um, had, let's do first grade, the ratio's twenty. They were projected at sixty-one students. Uh, let's use net enrollment for the sixty-one students. They would have calculated at four allocations. Uh, if enrollment came in at sixty students on count day, net enrollment, when you divide that by the ratio of twenty, that's three teacher allocations. So in that case, one student decrease would result in a reduction of the one teacher. But on count day, what we're doing is truing up enrollment to those max class sizes in each grade level. So again, if, if the opposite happened of they were projected at sixty students and had three teachers on count day, if they got that one extra student, then they would get that fourth teacher. Okay, moving on to mid-year allocations. Uh, so, so this year, uh, we were tasked with developing, um, mid-year general ed, uh, teacher adjustment parameters. Uh, what we do is we started, uh, reviewing enrollment after fall break through the end of November. Uh, again, trying to find when school enrollment is a few weeks after count day, when it's stabilized. Are there any changes in enrollment, um, that should trigger a new allocation? So these parameters were, um, addressed to, or developed to address class sizes, um, but also minimized disruption to students. Uh, because if a new allocation is triggered in the middle of the year, then that classroom is broken up, um, so that each classroom is below the maximum class size. Uh, the general fund contingency account is the funding source for this. Um, again, this was done like the, um, the keeping one and two-star schools whole account day, um, cause we don't have a track record of how many, or what the, what the cost of this would be for these allocations. So I'm gonna hand it off to Area Superintendent Paul to go over the parameters.
Okay. So while, while we look at these mid-year allocations of possibly handing them out to, um, to schools, looking through the, through the end of November, you know, this is three to four months into the school year when we start looking at that. There really is a lot to consider with questions and making this decision on how this would actually look at schools. It is, it can be a very difficult situation for a lot of schools when these allocations are handed out. So a lot of questions that we ask when this happens, um, you know, we are, could be up to four months into a school year. And when we, the, the thing that is always in the back of our minds when area superintendents and principals are working through this is minimizing disruptions. How can we minimize the disruptions to groups of students who have been in a classroom this far into the school year? And while it's great thinking we get an allocation to help reduce class sizes or to make things better at a school, how is that going to affect, affect or impact our students when they're settled into their rooms? We want to help our teachers and students, but we have a lot of questions to be asking. Um, splitting up the students, making the, having them reestablish norms, reestablish their, their routine within another classroom, that can be, you know, have an impact for sure. Um, finding a teacher this far into the school year oftentimes can be very, very challenging. We already know how challenging that is at the beginning of the year. So do we, do we have to find a long-term substitute? Can we find a teacher moving into these ti- this time of year? Um, you know, we might have a great teacher that we know that's at the neighboring school, but it's October, it's November. So there's that dynamic from principal to principal. Um, will that principal even allow a teacher to move over and put the other school in a tough spot? Uh, is there a, a pool of people out there to even hire? Another thing that we find a lot is, does the school even have space to create another classroom? That's a huge issue that we run into a lot of times. Um, no classrooms are even available to create another classroom, even if we wanted to have that done. So that leads into the question of team teaching. Yes, we want to reduce class sizes, but we don't have the room. So are we going to now create, instead of a class of twenty, we're gonna have a class of thirty-five with two teachers in the room? So is that really what we wanted to have in the first place of trying to reduce class sizes to make a better class? And then on top of that, we might have a class of thirty-five students. But do we have then a teacher to go into that room? Can we have a long-term sub and a certified teacher in the room? How is that dynamic going to work? So there's a lot to process in looking at how all of this is going to work and fit together. And then when you look at the secondary level as well, like we had talked about earlier, master scheduling. How is the master schedule going to be impacted? Because it might not just impact like Deputy Superintendent McMaster was talking about. We might not be looking at just one classroom. We have to look at licensure. We have to look at spreading this out across the board. Is it really truly going to be making a difference when we're handing out an extra allocation to a secondary school? Um, so there are a lot of factors to continue. And one thing we always have to look at when I mention that team teaching situation, we really want this to be reducing class sizes. And we try to make it basically instruct principals, this is to create another classroom. So if we can't create another classroom, what really are we going to do? So a lot of problem solving has to go into this situation. So a, a lot of questions and things to consider when we're looking at this. So when we are looking at mid-year allocations to make that decision on, and when, when do we decide to give out that mid-year allocation? We look at it here, you can see these two bullets on this trigger. We look at them at one and two-star schools and then the three, four, five-star school groupings. Very similar in, in the determination of this. Uh, but, you know, one, one major nuance. We're looking at that average class size of two over, the average class size. Now remember, average is the key word. So if we have two classes of twenty-five students each, it does not mean one class at twenty-seven and one class at twenty-five. It's that average class size going over by two students. Yep. And so, um, so that's really what we're taking a look at, that average class size over by two. And the main difference between the ones, one and two-star and the three, four, five-star that we take a look at is when that, what we've made of that determination is for a one and two-star school, when they hit that average class size of two over, we're going to look at giving them that allocation right then and for that midterm review. For the three, four, and five-star, we wanna steam, see more stability and make sure that they're holding that. So we look at over like a two snapshot period, time period of, of reviewing that um, at multiple allocation meetings. So over a couple of weeks, they hold that um, average class size of two over, and then we'll make that determination of giving them that extra allocation. We wanna give more support because we know those one and two-star schools need as much support as they can. So we give it to them right away. And so that's really the main determination between those two categories of schools on being able to provide that support both ways for those two schools. Um, so that's, that's where we have decided. And this is through that end of November time period for the mid-year allocations that we're working with there. Okay? Okay. So here, um, a little bit more kind of reiterating that, um, you know, it's, 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 problems can be spaced, you know, spaced is a major problem. A lot of problem solving goes into working with the area superintendents. And there is definitely an urgency to fill. Once we hand out that allocation to the schools, we want to make sure that it is filled by, by winter break. Because the longer that that allocation is hanging out there, it just kind of builds that tension within the school and product. Maybe not tension is not the right word, but that pressure to make sure that we've given you this allocation, we need to make sure that our kids and our teachers are taken care of. And we really want that to be filled. So that's an extra layer on all of this. And we gotta make sure we are doing right by our kids. So just another thing to consider when we're looking at these mid-year allocations to be able to use them.
So staying on that one, um, there is, uh, there is a recent situation with a teacher that, you know, had been reaching out for some advocacy that I think we're all fairly familiar with. And it seems like in the data that she provided, which again, you know, is just the information we have, that her classroom, and she was in a, a one or two-star school, although her class was at ratio coincidentally on count day, and then I think again at the last day, she had actually, according to her information, been over ratio for a vast majority of the rest of that time. But she, but there was fluctuation. And so on the days where like the snapshot, like the count day, and then at the end of the year, she had gone down. But overall, she had been over ratio for a majority of that time. It's also the basis for where my point is about when teachers say that a special education student is pushing in more than the minor amount of time. Is there a willingness, again, going back to the scalpel analogy, to consider variations when, and you would only know this through the principal. Clearly, the principal would have to be alerting the area superintendent to this. But classrooms that, when teachers have their over ratio a majority of the time, even if on that one day, they're not. Um, so it's just, just something to consider because it seems like it was the basis of this teacher. On the two, these two days, they were right at the number, but she had been over a vast majority of the time and then had been. And then had been over going into the second half of the year promptly went right back up. And then we, we, you know, did get that request for help for her. So anyways, I just offer that as we potentially consider scalpel ways. To address some of those, those situations.
I just want to mention, I thank you very much for the feedback and, and you know, this is a new process and we're always looking to refine. I do want to mention that this is net enrollment also. So going back to the beginning of the presentation, we talk about net enrollment. So just because we have an average of two over doesn't necessarily mean that triggers it either. Because we have to calculate in the net enrollment. So it, it, it's not as simple as it may appear at the surface. And it's, it's complex, but appreciate the feedback.
Thank you for that. So a little bit more, a lot of this has kind of already been mentioned a little bit with the high schools and middle schools. With the master scheduling. So. With this, you know, a lot of students, sometimes a lot of students can be affected with master scheduling changes. And this is why, a reason why we're going through the middle of or the end of November. And that sense of urgency to be able to fill those positions in middle, especially in middle schools and high schools. By winter break. So if there is a need to change that master schedule, it can be, those changes can be put in place by winter break. So starting that second semester. The master, whatever changes need to happen can be put in place for the second semester because. We know that those changes in that schedule, it's near impossible to be able to do it mid semester and. Try to change kids' classes around all over the place. It just is not feasible to do that. So. Timeline wise for those mid-schedule or mid-al, mid-year allocation changes. There is a dramatic impact on middle, on middle schools and high schools with that scheduling conflicts. So that's a, that's something there. And to kind of take that even a step further with this with middle schools and high schools. When, when this, when these allocations are given, we look at that 10 students, sorry, 10 students or more. Over that trigger number for midyear allocations for high schools and middle schools for that average class size. We talked about two for the elementary schools. Here we're talking about 10 for middle schools and high schools. Now with this, when that trigger number happens. The area superintendent and the, and the principal really have to take a deep look at their scheduling. Is it even possible to put an extra allocation into their master scheduling because some of them are so complex? Is it even possible to collapse a class to create other ones? Is it even possible to hire a specific type of licensed teacher to create more classes? As deputy superintendent McMaster mentioned, there might not be any type of unicorn or even half a unicorn out there to be able to. To hire someone like that. So it could be possible that a school would not even be able to accept that extra allocation in the secondary schools. Because their master schedule, schedule wouldn't be able to allow it. We would hope that wouldn't happen and there'd be able to be some kind of relief. But it's a, you know, very night and day differences are possible between the elementary schools and the secondary schools with the midyear allocations. Possible there. So. And then moving to our next slide here. And back in February, on February 11th, there were some questions brought forward by the board on a couple of other. Areas such as collaborative schools and then some allocations, other questions on allocations and at one and two star schools. So a little bit of information to provide there specifically to our collaborative schools to start. Right now, our current schools that we have, we have 10 elementary schools, three middle schools and then four other. Basically non-comprehensive or non-traditional schools. So they're listed there on the third bullet. Collaborative schools are a different type of designation than one and two star schools. And so these are either state designated CSI schools, which are CSI schools are. In the bottom 5% statewide title one schools are CSI. And then, so those are collaborative schools or another category of collaborative schools are in the bottom 10% of Washoe County School District Schools. So that's how. These schools are identified into our collaborative for extra, for extra support. Two of the main supports that our collaborative schools receive, we have allocated an instructional coach to each one of these. Schools and we have also allocated a long-term substitute teacher and we've kind of nicknamed them our super subs, which. Is a great resource for our schools. And they are used however the school is needed. They have been used. Some of them are in classrooms long-term for support. Some of them. Are used for if a school is short, a substitute on a day-to-day basis, they fill in wherever is needed. A lot of them are working as instructional supports for students with small groups, which has been a great resource. It's, it's been one of the, the instructional coach and the long-term sub have been extremely popular and very useful. Positions for our collaboratives. We also provide additional instructional materials for our collaboratives, additional professional development. We have a collaborative school supports coordinator for that, that works with all of our schools, Dr. Raquel Pelletier. She's an amazing resource. For all of our schools. So it's been a really positive start to our, to our collaboratives.
I want to say thank you for this because when I visited Innovations, they're using their long-term substitute teacher as the greeter. At their front desk because they don't have a clerk, I don't believe, or somebody that performs in that role. And so the principal there was thrilled about having these supports. So really, really well done.
Great. Thank you for that. So moving on to one and two star schools. So when we look here. These, so Mr. Bozo mentioned this, so two different supports that we are providing to our one and two star schools. So on count day, the, we, that the board approved. If there are, at our one and two star schools, if alloc, if enrollment is slightly lower than. What was projected normally though, locations would be pulled at count day. Those allocations are not being pulled at calendar. They're able to keep what they've already been allocated. And then also, class sizes were reduced in fourth and fifth grade. From the third, it was 34 to one down to 30 to one. And so we've had some smaller class sizes in third and fourth grade at our one and two star schools. So. Those are two different kinds of supports that we were able to offer our one and two star schools to be able to help them out. So. Those have been two really great resources we've been able to provide there for, for schools who are in need.
I don't know if maybe this is off topic or inappropriate at this point, but the reduced class size, we, we talk about that constantly, of course. And it's tied of, of course, to, you know, it's complex, it's concerning and it's costly. So. When we talk about we reduced fourth and fifth grade class sizes for one and two star, star schools to a maximum class size of 30 students, which we know is still a lot of students. Is, has there been a positive impact and how can you quantify or qualify that?
Thank you for the question. We did reach out to our accountability team and asked them to look into this very concept. As we were thinking of, of adding that to the presentation. It is a little bit early. Really the only data point we have is our midyear iReady scores. So I, we're hesitant to make any big sweeping judgments. But I can tell you so far at our primary grades. It's, there seems to be data that's tracking in a positive direction, saying that it was beneficial. And it's either neutral or not showing beneficial at our upper, in, upper elementary and middle school levels.
And on that note to follow on, remember, things we may have implemented, we wanted to try, the scalpel goes both ways. Okay, so that also means thinking about what we were intending and then considering that as we move forward. I just want you to know that. The reconsideration goes both ways for us. Okay, thank you.
The next area you asked us to look into was kindergarten through third grade class size ratios and explain the. The difference between what the ratios are in state law versus what our ratios are here. So we're gonna do a, a pretty good dive into that now. So when class size reduction funding started. The, the ratios that were put into law were 16 to one in kindergarten through second grade and 18 to one in third grade. The state never funded those ratios and they even acknowledged this in previous funding bills. So in the 2015 session, when full day kindergarten was a program. The state had funded districts at a district-wide ratio of 21 to one for kindergarten. In the 2017 session. That full day kindergarten program was shifted to the Nevada plan, which was the old K through 12 funding model for Nevada. And. Then the funding bill no longer recognized that funded ratio of 21 to one. Similarly, when we had our class size reduction program. The funded ratios for first and second grade were 17 to one, not 16 to one and third grade was 20 to one, not 18 to one. When this got pushed into people-centered funding plan, again, no separate funding bill that recognized that higher level of, of funding. One important note here is that the state funded those programs at. On district-wide ratios. It wasn't that each individual school and grade had. For example, kindergarten, a ratio of 21 to one. It was, does your average class size across the district for kindergarten meet that 21 to one ratio? And then that's what they use to, to fund that program. So. In recognition of those historically funded ratios, what we've done is kept our staffing ratios. At a level to meet those districts or, sorry, meet those district-wide ratios or come extremely close to meeting them. Based on state funding levels. So. The data in the table below comes from our class size reduction reports that you see on a quarterly basis. One thing to note on those reports is that we have to count all students. But we're not allowed to count any students or any. Special education teachers or gifted and talented teachers, even though they may be providing support to those elementary level students. So. If we were to account for those teachers, then those ratios would be lower in those grade levels. So we look at the table here. What we're trying to show is, okay, for each grade, what's the ratio in law? So that's the 16 to one in kindergarten through second grade and 18 to one in kindergarten. The state historically funded a kindergarten ratio of 21, 17 to one in first and second grade and 21 in third grade. Our last quarterly report for class size reduction. Our district-wide ratios, as you can see, were, were very close to those historically funded ratios. Now. The mix of students each year will make that ratio change slightly, but it's hung around that level for, for several years. Then. What we have on the far right column is the maximum class size in those grade levels to achieve the district-wide. Ratio in that grade level. So for kindergarten, the maximum class size is 25. You could have class sizes of 25. You could also have class sizes of. 17 perhaps in that grade level. So when we look at it again on a district-wide ratio. Those ratios were put in place so that we meet the district-wide historically funded ratio.
We gotta stay here because we've, we've received a bunch of emails from kindergarten teachers and we're glad because that's exactly why we're doing, it's why we asked for this. I'm really struggling with this. So I, I understand the state ratio. I understand the historically funded and I understand the district-wide ratio of 20.4. But I don't understand why some classrooms are getting 25 kids. I mean, because we've gotten a whole bunch of emails just in the past day from kindergarten teachers who are saying we've got 25 kids right now. So are we over, I mean, if the ratio is like, let's say 20.5 or 20. Why do some classes have the 25? Like they should have, I, I just, I sincerely, there's, I've been doing this a long time. But I sincerely do not understand. Why the real, if, is the real ratio one to 25? Because it seems like we have quite a few kindergarten classrooms that are at 25. But I have been telling people for a very long time that I thought it was one to 20. And I do not understand the gap for this. Now I do when we divide it out, that makes sense. But I, it doesn't make sense to me why kindergarten classrooms have 25 kids. It feels like they should. If the ratio is one to 20, why isn't it, that's when you trigger. I, I don't understand that delta.
All right. Thank you for the question. So. Because we have a different, every, every school has a different mix of kindergarten students. So when we're funded at a level of 20, 21 to one. If we were to say the max class size is 21. Then. That would require significantly more teacher allocations beyond what we were ever funded for that ratio. So. The ratios are set in a way where. All the mixes of students, whether it's 25 to one, 17 to one, 20 to one, 22 to one. Will have that district-wide ratio of the 21 to one. It's. It's to account for all the mix of students. I mean, if you, if you lowered the ratio to 21 to one or the max class size. I think you'd have a district-wide ratio of closer to 17, maybe 16 students. And. Because the state never funded us at that level. We haven't been able to fund that lower ratio in kindergarten. Does, does that help explain the gap?
It helps. It, it helps. It helps because I understand that we're doing the, we're dividing by the entire district, but. I mean, we're hearing from a lot of kindergarten teachers that have 25 kids in their class. So. It's just too, it's too many in my, in my opinion. And that's, that's our work. That's. Board decisions to potentially provide directions on that. But I understand that the state doesn't fund us the way that they should, which is really the shortest way between A and B would just be simply if the state funded us to their mandated class ratios. But the swing in the number of kinders classrooms that have so many more kids in it. Is a, is a tremendous weight for those educators of our youngest learners. I'm in the, the K-12 space. I'm not sure what the funding is in pre-K. And so that's an area that I'm really giving some thought to. And again, we'll get to the end of this presentation and see what staff is looking for from us in terms of maybe directed motions, but. I, it's, it's, I, I, I struggle with this one and we're hearing it from our kindergarten teachers who. Are very overloaded with our youngest learners who are just learning what school is for the first time. And this was a great knowledge for me because I thought it was one to 20. And that's why it didn't make sense when so many people were reaching out and saying, well, we all, we have 25 kids in the class. So. Thank you for teaching me about that. Trustee Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. And again, I, I get the. You know, the way it's spread out across the district and. We gotta, the state is never going to fund us how we should properly be funded. I don't know what they're thinking. Honestly. It's just, I, I think they're making themselves feel good, you know? That this is what the ratio is and we're going to fund this, but they're not looking at what is actually happening. And I mean kindergarten, really that's where a lot of behaviors. Let's face it, every kindergartner has behaviors. They got the wiggles, they can't keep their hands to themselves. They're speaking out of turn. Their focus hasn't, hasn't. Got the strength that it needs to have to get through a whole class, a whole, a whole school day. And so it's really the time where if, if we think about it, this is. We've got to start with a strong start. I mean, we got to have a strong start because that start. Really lays the groundwork for every grade that comes after. And if we don't put the work in at that, at the start. It, we're on a downhill slide from then on and trying to catch up and. We, we gotta have smaller class sizes so that these behaviors that each and every one of them is bringing. Can be worked on diligently and they can master, they can master their focus, their attention. The wiggles, the keep your hands to yourself, respect your neighbor. But you've got 25 kids in a class with all of them having those behaviors. It's a constant, Johnny, keep your hands to yourself. Sarah, you need to sit still, you know. You know, no, it's not your turn to speak. I mean, it's just, we're, we're, we're gonna fail. And we are failing. And I, I know that we don't have to fail. We don't have to fail. If, if we get a handle at it, on it, at this, at this base level and get a strong foundation, we're, we're gonna exceed our own expectations. But if we, again, I'm just saying, if we're just looking at the numbers and it, and making ourselves feel good that, oh, well, we're within the realm, but the actuality is you go into these classrooms and we're not having a success on a day-to-day basis. We're gonna have little snippets of success. We're gonna have, you know, I go and read at Sun Valley Elementary School and there's a little guy in there that pushes in and I'm seeing his maturing and everything. But, and those are little snippets of success. But an overall picture of, we're really getting it done, guys.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me jump in if, if I may. Uh, I think, I think one disconnect is, for me, just kind of piggyback on, on, uh, President Smith, is the district wide ratio contrast to max class size to achieve district wide ratio. Yeah, I, I have zero understanding of that. So I, I don't know if, and maybe that's a topic for another time. But, uh, you know, it, it's, this is, and I think the team has done exactly what we asked them to do. I mean, we're, we still have some more pages to do and, and I, I can tell you I'm hungry. I think a lot of people are here. And I, and I hope we're not going to get a test after this because there's a lot here. Um, and I'm grateful for it. I think one thing is, and I was going to say this at the very end of the presentation, I'll just say it now. I think too that there may be, uh, if you haven't already talked about it, some benefit to educate, uh, our staff on the allocation process because there's, there's a lot there. And I know when I'm out in schools, there's, there's a real high level of frustration. You know, they don't understand it. I certainly don't understand it. Because, I mean, what I'm gathering is, is we kind of talked through this is oftentimes our own guidelines, we don't necessarily follow those because it depends, right? It depends on, you know, there's a lot of nuances. It depends on if we have space available. It depends on what time of the year it is because we don't want to create disruptions. So I, I understand that. I mean, and there's certainly a level of frustration. You know, we had, and President Smith talked about the kindergarten class. It's, you know, we, there's a Mitchell class that everybody in here knows about. You know, we, we wrestled with that for a couple of, of weeks. And I'm grateful that we were able to find some solution, uh, that did stop short of creating another class, which based on our guidelines, should have created another class. So, I, I, you know, there's, there's certainly a level of frustration from, you know, this body and the staff. And I, and I, it all comes down to funding, you know, no bucks, no buck rogers. And, and I, I hope that our legislators are really listening to us, or the, the governors listening to us because that's largely where it starts. Uh, anyways, uh, comments that were on my mind and I, I wanted to get them off my mind, uh, before I forgot. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, this next slide here just quantifies, um, if we were to meet those ratios in law in every grade level at every school, um, in kindergarten through third grade, that would require another two hundred and three teacher positions at a cost of, uh, twenty point three million dollars. That was based on our, 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 uh, projected numbers for this year that were included in our class size reduction plan.
Mr. Basel, if I can jump in again, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the number that was just presented because I think we're all trying to wrap our hands around the disconnect between the ratios and the funding. And I think what this is saying to us is if we look K three and we were to fund at the state ratios, not the entire district aggregate, if that were to be the case, in K three, we would need two hundred three additional teachers. And I might be misunderstanding, but I just wanted to take the opportunity because I know right now I can see kind of a, a real desire for everyone to understand this disconnect. And I just wanted to make sure maybe we just paused and had our hands all the way around what you are saying here.
Thank you for the questions Superintendent Ernst. Uh, yes, you're correct. This, this would be, or this cost and the number of teachers here are for every kindergarten class across the district to meet that sixteen to one ratio. Same thing with first grade, second grade, and third grade at eighteen. This isn't the district wide average. This is at a school by school analysis. Um, for each, each quarterly class size reduction, um, item that, that comes to this board's, way, the, we have to file variance request for each grade level that is above the ratios in this first column here, which is the ratios in law. So, what that means is, let's say you have a school A in kindergarten just needs one, um, if you file one variance request for that grade, that means they would need one teacher. When you add all those up, we have the two hundred and three variance requests. Um, and that number fluctuates a little bit, but it hangs around, um, the two hundred plus a few number. And again, that's for each grade level of each school to meet those ratios.
So for me, I know that the state is not funding. So I can take that first column on slide thirty-seven. I love it, but I, I can throw it out the window. What I would like to see, and maybe again, we're, because what Superintendent Ernst and I are trying to do is figure out, like, is this conversation enough? Do you want us to make analysis motions? I would like, I, I'm hearing my colleagues want to get us where I had no idea this column on the right existed. So what would it take to get us to the district wide ratio being the real ratio? I had no idea. Now this makes so much sense. Why people have been reaching out and saying, my class size is this. And I was like, it can't possibly be you, you would have triggered. Now I get that. I am interested and I am hearing an interest to see what it would be to get us to a real district wide ratio, that twenty point four seventeen. That would be a huge improvement. I know we're not going to get to that first one without additional state help. And I know even this requires checks and balances in the budget. But I will tell you that I have always operated under the assumption that that third column, the second from the right, is what we were actually doing. And I'm hearing an interest in trying to get us to that number.
That third column looks pretty good.
But I, but I don't want to speak for any of my colleagues, but that is kind of the, you know, that is, that is the interest I'm hearing. Because I didn't know that that far column even existed or was actually in practice.
So just to summarize, and I know their emotion will come forward and we're continuing to work our way through the PowerPoint. But what I think I hear is rather than the two hundred three that's been identified against the state ratio, more, what would it be to get to the district ratio, something far more palatable? And it may not be two hundred three, probably a, a lesser number. And what might that number be? Is, is, am I capturing the, the kind of the intention of the group right now?
That, that state ones, like when I was back in school in the dark ages. I mean, that's ridiculous. But that district wide, that, that's nice and cozy in there.
Um, Dr. Nicolet and Trustee Phoenix, we have talked a lot. I would really like, because before, we're kind of hearing each other. I'm, I want you to be heard on this.
I'm still hanging out in the nine million dollar deficit. Anything that we can do to move the needle, I believe is worth looking at. I also know that this is a very complex problem. And I, I know that some schools have more kindergartners than others and some have less than others. It, it's, it's a dynamic of our individual schools. Having said that, I, I think it's worth a look see. My colleagues seem to like the district wide ratio column. Um, I think it's worth a look see to see how many teachers we would have to hire, to employ, to, to meet that standard and how much money it would cost. It's worth a look see. Having said that, um, I think that we know there's going to have to be some compromises. And again, I truly appreciate this deep dive. This is a lot of work and you've given us a lot of information. And I concur with my colleague. I think it's really important that at every level in our schools, our employees understand this, this complex issue. Because on the surface, it seems like, I can't do, I can't teach all these kids. Please help me, I'm drowning. To be able to understand the complexities, I think, will very much help. Thank you.
So not to say everything that we just said, and all of you there, I am in agreeance to just have you take a look at that and see, uh, is that something that you can do? Is that something you can do that's easily done with the data that you have?
Yeah, that's, that's something we can do.
Okay. No, as, as long as everyone else is on board doing that, I, I agree with the same. I just, uh, uh, in addition to all that, I keep thinking about, you know, the big problem solving, like where's all these, there's no solution, there's no one fix all for everything. And there's just so much that goes on. But one of the things I keep thinking about is, is, you know, how do we try to get those numbers accurate as best as we can? But there's so many different things, right? So, you know, one of the things that comes to my mind is just, uh, looking at, uh, how can we get, like you said, the teachers, uh, and the staff, uh, better educated at this? As maybe the families somehow understand and commit to please enroll and, uh, stay in school. You know, but there's so many different things that come up, you know? But that was just the thoughts that I had on that there, so thanks.
And now I'd like to go to Trustee Hall and make sure her voice is heard in this as well.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, I agree with Dr. Nicolet that the, the deficit is a little scary. But I think it's really important for us to have the number, have the information for that third column so that we can make educated and informed decisions going forward with the budget. So if it's possible and, and we're able to collect that data, I would very much like to see it.
Thank you. Okay, um, so just another, another calculation. There is an assembly bill in the two thousand twenty-one session that required us to quantify, our current class sizes against the State Board of Ed's recommended class size of fifteen to one in kindergarten through third grade and twenty-five to one in all other grades. That would require another four hundred and forty-five general ed teachers at the cost of forty-four point five million dollars. So, these two specifically are pretty major, um, cost impacts. This slide here shows, um, in each grade level, what is to decrease the, the ratio by one student. So, if we were to do that on a district wide level, it'd be a hundred and seven new teacher positions at a cost of ten point seven million. You can see that it's broken out to each individual grade here, um, and the, the impacts for each individual grade. And, you know, just lastly, we, we reduced, um, the ratio to thirty to one for fourth and fifth grades at one and two star schools this last, um, this last budget cycle. And then I'll hand it back over to Deputy Superintendent McMaster.
Okay, before we close out this presentation with a discussion about special education allocations, we wanted to just sort of summarize with this visual. I've heard from this board and, and we hear from stakeholders often about desires to, to lower class sizes. I, I know that we, we mentioned in this meeting that, um, there was a desire at twenty-five students in a kindergarten classroom was too many. But I think we need to remember that comes at a cost of one million dollars to reduce by one student, two million to reduce by two students. Um, so we have a, a desire to lower class sizes, but we have to balance that with the cost as well as the ability to fill. Um, when we make these decisions, we're creating more vacancies and we have to ensure we have a pipeline to fill those vacancies. So, um, it, it is a lot of factors to bring in. But I know we've mentioned a couple of times that it all comes down to funding and I just want to push on that a little bit. It also comes down to our ability to fill. All right, now we're going to transition to, um, conversation about special education, um, allocations. Um, Mr. Basel, at the beginning of the presentation explained the math calculations related to general education allocations that are being adjusted based on, um, special education programs. This is going to go specifically into, um, special education allocations and caseload, um, associated with various programs. Please note that this discussion on, um, special education teacher allocations is completely separate from what we've been talking about from general education. So in special education allocations, um, these are, these are things that are written into students' IEPs, um, and, which is their individual education plan. Caseload numbers are outlined in the table, um, that's to the right. And this is all, um, this all comes from the Nevada Administrative Code three eighty-eight. These are not ratios that we just, um, randomly come up with. As staffing for special education has become a bigger challenge, while students, um, who receive services through an individualized education plan are increasing, we have needed to exceed caseloads in some cases and go above these numbers. Um, and when that occurs, we must ask for an exception from the Nevada Department of Education. We do work very closely with our partners in the Human Resource Department to, um, always attract and retain qualified people to teach in these areas. And we've made some good progress. I think that the work that we did to move up the hiring timeline is going to be very beneficial. But I acknowledge we still have plenty of work to do in this area.
Can even talk, quick question. Uh, the, the program, um, chart, caseload, so are those, are those students? It just seems something like, for instance, speech and language. We have fifty-five students in speech and language, that's it?
So this is a, a teacher services fifty-five students. So for every fif, every fifty-five students who receive speech and language services, um, there's one teacher. When you get to fifty-six, that's another teacher.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That makes a lot more sense because I, the way I looked at it, I, it looked like that's all, those are the only students we have in those programs. So it's one teacher per caseload is what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
And not all of these allocations are at every school. These are spread throughout our district. And again, driven by each individualized education plan.
All right, and I think that's the it because we're not going to go into the appendix. Okay, we've done a lot of talking. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Pablo Nava Duran. We'll come back to him.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and we, we won't deliberate or take any votes. We'll, we'll pause the public comment here. I'll, I'll keep that open. I'll keep the public comment period open to see if our speaker comes back. Um, so, okay, first things first, in my opinion, you guys just took gold for America in allocations conversations. Okay, like seriously, we have asked for these presentations and this information multiple times over the years. I have never seen anything like this. And so an incredible amount of gratitude. I have never seen anything as well done as this. So thank you so much. And now I think we do have our public commenter here, uh, Mr. Nava Duran.
Hello, guys. My name is, uh, my name is Nava Duran. I'm a substitute teacher for Washington School District. So we know, we know the, we know the, the room is declining, like Sanford said, in next twenty, fifty, twenty years. So I want to quick about the allocation of Pine Middle School because next school year, it's going to be Pine last year. So as, um, as many families are opting in for, for school of choice, they go year of the Poly, hers, or Swabs. Swabs, um, I expect that to, they're going to lose some teacher of Pine for next year. And I know how, I don't know how many is. And I know how, I don't know how many is. You know, they're going to be your last year. You know, you should be grateful because that's your last year. And then you got to transfer to different schools. So how you go, so once Pine closed, where are the teacher going to go to different schools? So my, that's my big question. And who is going to be, who's going to be a new principal of Von Middle School? Because it's going to be same principal as old Von. Or so after new, a new principal over there. So, and also, also I like to mention that we have, we do have a new elementary school in my area, near our area. Grateful to have a new school. You know, I feel, I feel like we could have, we could have a more, especially for special education allocation. We do have a Yale student, the highest Yale student in the, in the country for special education elementary school. So, so my biggest concern is if Pine have a Yale program, like new incoming program, where the, if Pine closed, where the, where this program goes? So that might be a question, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navadurán.
The board received emails from Krista Rossi, Julie Claykorn, the Clint family, Lindsay Massey, Carrie Yamamoto, John H., Melody Marabi, and Summer Elston.
Thank you. All right, so to bring it back here, and Mr. Navadurán brought up something that I was going to bring at the end. If I, if I would like to hear my colleagues' thoughts, but there are, there's one area that I, I would be interested in seeing additional analysis on and hearing from my colleagues. And that is, we already touched on it, evaluating a different model for special education students that are pushing into general education environments half or a majority of the time. I don't know where that waterline is, but your equation completely makes sense to me for students that really are in that gen ed setting less. But from the teachers we're hearing from, who they've got these special education students in upwards 60, 70, 80% of the day, I would encourage the team to consider if maybe like a bifurcated model based on the number of, the amount of time that children are pushing in, that maybe that needs to look a little different. Because a special education student that's pushing in 25 or even 40% is quite different than a student that's pushed in 80-plus percent. So I offer that for consideration of my colleagues. And then the other is, is we are embarking on our first school consolidations and closures. And I would be interested in hearing from the team about how we build a one-to-two-year allocation plan that reflects school departures, preemptive variances that may leave a school set for closure in a unique situation with our normal equation. And so those are just two things that I think about. And this is not just for Pine, this is for all the schools that we have targeted out. I feel the district is going to need a plan for this. And it's also something I've discussed with Vice President Mayberry as well, too. If you want to weigh in on that as well, or if anybody does. You don't have to, but I know, you know, we've, we've discussed it.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have anything else to add. I mean, I think it's important that we just ensure that, you know, we have the right supports in place next year. I mean, it's no secret that Pine is a bit challenged with, particularly on the staffing side. So those are the conversations that, and I've had the same conversation with Superintendent Ernst. And he assured me that the team was, was meeting and has met with the interim principal and putting a plan forward. So I'm not the expert in those areas. I'm going to heed to you, but it's certainly my, I'm very mindful of the challenges that that, particularly that community is, is, is going to have. Thank you.
And the only closing comment on that for me is making sure that this request that we're asking of you, that's something you can do and you have the tools to do that. And generally, speaking, you know, about the percentage of time in the classroom and stuff like that. You know, if we're asking something of you, we're hoping that you have the tools to be able to do that. I just want to make sure that we make that clear. Whatever we ask of you, we want to make sure that you're able to actually do that.
I think that the, the challenge with the percent of time in the classroom is that an individualized education plan can be changed at any moment in time. So we can do an analysis and a week later, it may not be a valid analysis. So, you know, I just, what we, what we can do is say, you know, what if that calculation was deleted, what would be the cost of that? We can certainly do that. But I will say it does get really messy when you start getting into percentages because that's not something we have control over that's driven by an individual child's needs which fluctuate over time.
That's an excellent point and thank you so much for bringing that up, Trustee Phoenix. Thank you. All right, so what we need now is a motion. We see that here. It would be slightly adjusted to, "I move Board of Trustees provides direction to the superintendent to analyze and report back to the board potential changes to the district's allocation process based on the board's discussion." Or something along those lines.
So moved.
JJ, could you please repeat the motion just to make sure that I'm understanding? I heard a lot of conversation and appreciate, you know, some of the comments about the time and what have you. I know we've got, I think, four additional analysis that we're bringing forward at upcoming budget meetings. Just want to make sure that I'm understanding so our staff can, can move forward in a productive way that meets the intention of the ask.
"The Board of Trustees provides direction to the superintendent to analyze and report back to the board potential changes to the district's allocation process based on the board's discussion."
I, I just wanted to make sure, are we clear on what those requests were? I mean.
Well, we, we could, like, so we could go and we could do individual items. Or they could come back and say, like, to Trustee Phoenix's point, there are some things you brought up, but they fall outside of what we can reasonably do. So we can, we can do it either way. We've had a very rigorous dialogue about this. So the way that the motion is right now is it provides the discretion to the superintendent and the team to parse through this. And then to come back and say, we like this idea, but this is maybe something for later or it's, it's difficult to do. And then we would give that respect and latitude to understand from them. But we could also be very prescriptive as well.
I, I did like Deputy Superintendent McMaster's recommendation because I get the percentage thing, that would, that would be crazy.
Yeah, so, thank you. Chief Legal Counselors have a motion, but I don't exactly have a second. And we're doing the, the discussion on the motion without actually a second.
I second.
So, okay, see a second. And now we'll have discussion on, on the motion.
So, can I?
That's not discussion on the motion, though. Discussion on the motion isn't reopening deliberations. Discussion on the motion is whether or not we should pass this motion. And so it's not what I rehash the whole conversation and start throwing out ideas that we like or dislike. That's not what discussion on the motion is. Discussion on the motion is just simply whether or not you feel the motion should be supported. And that's it. It's, 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 so the motion before this board right now is whether or not you want to pass a motion that says, "I move to report, I move that the Board of Trustees provides direction to the superintendent to analyze and report back to the board potential changes to the district's allocation process as discussed here." That's it.
Could it, but this is usually where we could put in a friendly, right? We've, we've put in.
You could put in a friendly, but I didn't hear anybody say I'm putting in a friendly.
Okay, so let's phrase it that way, that way we stay within, or, or we take a vote and it dies and then we, we bring it back to discussion, which we can also do as well, of course.
I don't think my friendly, it was just a reminder, it's not really a friendly. I trust, I trust you guys.
Vice President Mayberry and Dr. Nicolette.
Well, I, I'm happy to second the motion.
I already did.
You did already second the motion. All right, well, I'll take my second back. And then, but we'll have, we'll discuss some more, right?
Well.
Yes, we can discuss.
No.
Well, we, we can discuss this motion. So let's say, let's say Dr. Nicolette says, I could agree to that, but I'd like to suggest such and such onto the motion. So go for it.
I would actually take the reverse. I don't know if I can support it because it's so broad. And, and in my mind, I'm, I'm questioning, what are we trying to fix? Is, is what my wonderment is.
Sure. We, well, so we have a, we have a first, we have a second. And so we've, we've done it this way in the past, but we can do it either way. So we've done motions where we provide the direction based on the discussion and then the, the team comes back. What we can do here is take a vote. If it fails, we bring it back. And then we could add like specific prescriptive language, like around doing an analysis around the district ratios, things like that. So we can absolutely do that, but we have to take the vote and then it has to fail and then it can come back. Unless we just do a friendly and say that instead of it being based on discussion, to include such and such as such, because that's a friendly, we can do that. So if, you know, so it depends on what, what you'd like to see here, Dr. Nicolette. But we could request a friendly of the first and the second to say, you know, I move such and such, the district's allocation process to include an analysis of achieving district ratios and so on and so forth. So we can add the prescriptiveness right into this motion. I, I very much heard the consensus around doing an analysis around achieving the district ratios. And I will open it up for discussion on this motion if there's any other prescriptive direction that you'd like to see added on, including to Trustee Hall. Okay. So what I might suggest, if, if there's open to a friendly, is that we have the motion exactly as we see it here, straight down to the district's allocation process to include an analysis of achieving the district, the district, what's the word I'm looking for? District, district mandated ratio?
District-wide.
The district-wide ratio. Mm-hmm. The, yeah, okay. So we've got the whole motion, report back to the board potential changes to the district's allocation process, including an analysis on achieving district-wide ratios across all classrooms and other board discussion. And so that's a little bit more prescriptive. Is that like what you were looking to achieve on that one area so that we're clear on it, Dr. Nicolette?
I think initially we pointed to that district ratio as K through third grade, not all classrooms.
Okay. Okay. So then if, if we're open to a friendly on that, it would be, "I move that the Board of Trustees provides direction to the superintendent to analyze and report back to the board potential changes to the district's allocation process based on the board's discussion and to include an analysis on achieving district-wide ratio in Kinder through third for all schools and classes."
Before I accept that friendly, I just want to check Superintendent if he understands it the same.
I do. I, I think I've been tracking the intention of what we're looking for here. It's again, column three, district-wide ratio. What would the amount of money cost towards that? That would be a part of the analysis. How many teachers would that include? I think we're trying to get those two pieces of information back to the board at an upcoming board meeting.
I'm open to that friendly amendment.
Are you open to that as well, Trustee Westlake? Okay. And I'll say what is, what is good about this motion is that it does provide clear direction, but it also leaves it wide enough for the team to contemplate some of the things we've discussed and potentially come back with other areas that they would like us to consider, but it doesn't mandate it. It leaves the door open for their professional discretion on what else to come back with. Okay, so we have a motion by Trustee Woodley. We have a second by Trustee Westlake. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you so much. That was a big item and it was fantastic. Like very, very well done. All right, that closes item 2.02 and brings us now to item three, our closing items. JJ, do we have any public comment for item 3.01?
Pablo Navadurán.
Welcome again, Mr. Navadurán.
Hello. Hello. I want to say last Thursday, I went, I went, I attended to zoning advocacy committee and so many family from, from Hefaker to Henn Valley to Donner Springs, a lot of public comment. So the most, so overwhelmed me did not want to go to Von Rooster. There are certain reasons why, so. By the way, I want to start off to say, we do have a lot of great teachers at Rooster High School and probably Von Middle School and including Principal Mr. Luttrix. She doing great job, great job, so. But I have witnessed, I witnessed so many students, a lot of fight in the Rooster High School in past recent years. And what the most important, you see, you see on the news. So I think because of the culture has, Rooster has changed because back, you know, back to like 2003 when opened the mine ranch up to pre-COVID year, trying to train Rooster High School doing great job. You know, making three or four-star school at the highest, at highest so far, so. You know, during COVID-19, I see like this is decline of Rooster High School, Danco, Henn Valley Zone for Rooster High School. You know, so many family leaving, aside to opt-in for school of choice program, go to the mine ranch high school. And not so many student are coming to IB program. So I want to take note. And, and of course, we have a business who doing some vape shop marijuana and marijuana alcohol across Rooster High School. I feel like we could take a lecturer to move that marijuana out of business by half a mile away, half a mile away. And also, this is the, the lack of opportunity for student at Rooster High School. Primary on AP classes because a one student told me that there are no AP US history who, student who are zone for the money, take a Rooster High School because they want to do some metal shop here, so. This is a lack of opportunity in Rooster High School. Danco coronary, theater. And also, it's not their fault that their school are outdated. Even don't want to play in the gym because, because how dangerous the basketball court is. So have a nice day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navadurán.
The board received an email from Elise Rose.
All right, that closes item 3.01. And at 1:05 PM, I'll call this meeting to adjournment. Thank you.